Again. Again. It's contagious. Okay. That's fine. Good to go. Can I ask everyone?
One to be seated and we'll move back into open session. Thank you for coming this evening. We're going to reopen and come back into open session. This is the Board of Selectments meeting for January 29th, 2019, for the town of Yarmouth. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start the meeting with public comments. Does anyone wish to address the board? Jerry? Please identify yourself, your precinct and...
Good evening. My name is Jerry Niedemeyer. I'm a full year resident and taxpayer and have lived in Yarmouth Port for 10 years after living in Vermont for 35 years. I was a federal judge in the United States District Court for the District of Vermont for 27 years and have served in the same capacity in the Federal Court of the District of Massachusetts for the last 10 years. I would like to comment on the school building project as a Vermont taxpayer, as a Yarmouth taxpayer. I understand that the Board of Selectment has voted to instruct Town Council to prepare and file a lawsuit against the school committee and potentially the town of Dennis to declare the school vote to be invalid and to seek an injunction to halt the project under the terms of the current regional agreement. I understand that the lawsuit has not yet been filed. I also understand that the Massachusetts School Building Authority has agreed to contribute nearly 45 million to the project provided there is no litigation pending or threatened on or before March 12th, 2019, 120 days from December 12th, 2018, the date the MSBA approved the contribution. If the district is unable to make that certification, the MSBA will withdraw the contribution and the funds will be lost. For the following reasons, I agree with the views of distinguished Town Council as well as Board Member and Attorney Michael Stone, expressed at an earlier meeting, that they would rather be on the other side of the litigation. To obtain the extraordinary remedy of injunctive relief in Massachusetts, a party must demonstrate at a minimum that the party has a reasonable likelihood of success on the merits. When seeking to invalidate a state statute such as Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 14D, the court will look first at the plain meaning of Section 14D. That is what it says on its face, its facial validity. Unless the language or meaning of the statute is vague and/or ambiguous, the statute will generally be upheld unless the school committee abused its discretion in choosing the permitted option for a combined district vote under Section 14D. Yarmouth's position seems to be that the school committee should have chosen a town meeting vote permitted under Section 16D and specified in the regional agreement where each town must approve project costs. But just because Yarmouth doesn't like the effect of the law doesn't make the law invalid. The statute seems clear on its face. The school committee exercised its discretion to bypass town meeting and followed the correct procedure. If the town believes that the statute is unfair, the proper remedy is to petition the legislature to change the law. In my view, there may be four possible outcomes of the proposed litigation. First, Yarmouth wins and the school project is abandoned. The kids lose and one wonders what message this sends to businesses and individuals considering moving into the town. While Yarmouth has generously approved overrides for the past few years to support school operating costs, support for a much-needed building is a testament to the commitment to the best learning environment for our future generation. Second, the court finds that the project should go forward under the present terms. Yarmouth pays 48 million, Dennis pays 24 million, and the MSBA pays 45 million. This assumes that contrary to its statement, the MSBA does not withdraw its contribution upon threatened or actual litigation. Third, the court finds that the project must proceed under the terms of the regional agreement. With the MSBA contribution gone, Yarmouth now pays 78 million, Dennis pays 39 million. Fourth, the court finds that the project must proceed. However, since the litigation calls the MSBA to withdraw its contribution, Dennis has suffered damages by the loss of its share of that contribution. Yarmouth now pays 93 million, Dennis pays 24 million. I recognize that unfortunately this building project comes shortly after the Cape Cod Building Project approval and shortly before the town must finance a new public works facility, not to mention the looming wastewater remediation project. There is never a good time to raise taxes. The board has estimated that the annual tax impact for these three projects on the median home is $188 less any anticipated mitigation. However, it might not come as news to many that crossing the bridge from some high property tax states such as Vermont resulted in a substantial reduction in their tax burden. I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Susan Britter and I live in West Yarmouth and I'm going to piggyback on the previous gentleman's use of the word looming wastewater management plan. I just want to make a couple of comments. One is, because as a citizen very interested in this issue, I would urge you to act with a sense of urgency and wholeheartedly endorse the report, maybe with a few tweaks, that your citizen group is going to be discussing with you tonight. It is important that they have the total support of the board so that we can get out into the community and explain the plan, which brings me to the second point, which is lack of community understanding about the report. I do informal surveys all the time in my neighborhood and I have to tell you, and we were very involved, as you know, with the Windmill Project and had more than a general understanding of the wastewater plan and virtually no one knows any detail about the plan and time is fleeting. It is going to be upon us very soon. You have the lingering school issue which may color the way people are going to view these kinds of joint ventures with other towns. So I would urge you to get the community, I was very dismayed to look at the list of towns that you've, or not towns, but associations that you've put together to be briefed. And there's only one mention of any association along Lewis Bay when in fact there's almost 11 associations that really should be actively engaged in talking about the program. It's something we have to do. I looked at a list of frequently asked questions. I found question number seven, which is why are we doing this? And question number 17, most important, which is what happens if we don't do it? Those are the kinds of things that the neighborhood, neighbors, residents, and taxpayers really need to have an open discussion with you all because it's expensive and it will really change the course of Yarmouth as you move, it will change the DNA of Yarmouth actually. And it's, I completely support it. I think it has to be done and I hope that, you know, we can all join together and reach the point where we have total community support of the program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Yes.
My name is Lynda Callahan. I live on Charles Street, South Yarmouth, and I would just encourage everybody on the board to take a look at the letter that's at the end of your packet. I'm the chairperson of the South Yarmouth Library Association that functions as a friends group for the library and it is just, I won't read the letter itself, but it is just in support of the town continuing to work toward bringing the library appropriations up to the minimum level required by the state so that moving forward, we can not lose certification, the libraries not lose certification and any access to grant monies in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Vita.
Vita Morris. I just wanted to respond a little bit to what the first gentleman said about the school building project. First of all, the 120 days is not up until April 11th. That was even mentioned last night, the date at the school committee meeting. And if I understood him correctly, he kept referring that the school was going on the basis of 16D, which they weren't. The 16N, I mean, is what's causing the problem because it's so unclear. 14D is very, very clear, actually. And then in terms of what message we might be sending, what's the message that the school district has been sending for the last four years, mired in Level 3 with no end in sight for correcting that situation? And certainly no new building is going to solve what ails the DY district. That's for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes. Tom.
Just a brief few words. Tom, South Yarmouth, I encourage the board to continue with the lawsuit. There are many taxpayers I have talked to in town who are supporting you. I think the statue, as our previous speaker, with all due respect, sir, is absent of quite a few words, especially the word combined vote. There is no such thing as combined in Section N. The word is not there. It clearly states in the statue that each town will vote. It's a separate thing. The Cape Cod Tech vote was each town. Two-thirds of those towns had a vote to approve their project, as we know. Simple as that. If we went to a town meeting, it would take a two-thirds vote to pass, correct? Even our town budget's that way. Well, each town voted. Dennis says no, I mean yes, and we said no. It's 50/50. There's no two-thirds vote. So I encourage you to continue with your negotiations, whatever you decide to do. I think you get the support of a lot of taxpayers in town. A lot of people are going to get hurt with this. Doesn't matter if you have a $3,000 house, you've got a house that's worth much more than that, they're going to pay a lot more and a lot of them are retirees. Over 65% of these towns are retirees. Not including the school budget that hasn't come down. I understand that our budget might come in at two and a half, but, and of course, we haven't got the town budget. So I encourage it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing no one else, we'll move ahead with the library ad hoc committee discussion.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. I'm Sue Loveland and I'm the Chair of the Town Library Board, which you were quite nice enough to us to create this ad hoc study committee and we thank you for that. And so we're pleased to support the report. I just thought maybe you'd like to know who is on the Town Library Board. Some of you may never have met them, so Helen Niedemeyer and Jane Garvey and Pam Barton and Catherine Basile and Anastasia Ellis and George Bavino is there, which, Mark, who? I should, it's not which, who? Mark, I think you still need to see him and he needs, his name needs to be brought before you at some time in the future. So we thank you for, in around 19, I'm showing my age, 2016 or 15 or 16, we came to you and asked and you created this and we're grateful for that. So thank you.
I'm Lynda Callahan and I would also like to thank the board for including us on tonight's agenda. I'm the Chair of the Library Study Ad Hoc Committee and I would like to introduce the other members of the committee, some of whom are here tonight, and to give you a little bit of our background. Some of us are relative newcomers to Yarmouth and others are longtime residents and we have varied career experience. I raised my family in Wilmington, Mass, retired to Yarmouth in 2007 to property that my parents purchased in 1969 and I'm a former corporate librarian and public librarian. Sue Loveland is a retired teacher originally from Connecticut and is Chair of the Town Library Board. Richard Simon studied engineering, has lived all over the world and has worked in financial services, banking, and sales. He's our numbers guy. Mary Ridden Johnson, I'm not sure if she's here this evening, is from Western Mass, relatively new to Yarmouth, worked in social services and built a YMCA women's shelter in Springfield, I believe. Anne Marie Gavin, who is here, is a longtime resident of Yarmouth Port, worked in education, was on the Town Library Board and is our secretary. Jane Kane is ex-officio member of the committee and is the library director and I'm sure you know her educational and work background. We are joined this evening by Phil O'Brien, who's behind me, a principal with Johnson Roberts Associates and they were preparers of the library facilities study that aided us in our assessment. So you can see that we've brought varied backgrounds and ways of thinking to this issue. I'd like to now turn over the presentation to Richard.
The numbers guy. The library board's concern is in part a reflection of the perception of some of our neighbors that technology has rendered physical books and libraries obsolete, while Yarmouth's data shows that nothing could be further from the truth. Its libraries cannot fully service the public's existing or projected needs. And so over the next 15 minutes or so, I'm going to summarize the data, which is detailed in 110-page library building program analysis as well as a 78-page library facilities assessment study that was completed by Phil's group last year. Behind these two documents, there are scores of source documents and numerous spreadsheets used to compile and organize the data. Last time I checked, it was 1.5 gigs on my computer. In addition, I'm going to recap the committee's unanimous recommendation to meet our community's future needs and outline the suggested next steps to move forward. A key assumption of the committee is that the privately operated Yarmouth Port Library will continue its long tradition of providing library services to a portion of Yarmouth's total need. Now, to make it a little bit easier to visualize on the chart over there, I've converted library service need into facility size using the state's endorsed formula, taking service population, which is a combination of resident, non-resident taxpayer, and visitors, times service quality factors, the number per capita books and other items, seats, times service density factors, how tightly you put things together. The black line at the top of the chart shows how the population's need converted into facility size changed by decade. The solid colors on the bottom of the chart show how Yarmouth Port, which is the green color, South Yarmouth, which is the blue color, and West Yarmouth, the red color, combine to meet the need. So the white space between the black line and the top of the solid bars is the needs gap. And as you see on the left side of the chart, in 1950, when the town's population was just 3,300, Yarmouth's three private associations exceeded the library service need and they were able to keep pace in the 1960s in large part because of the addition of the West Yarmouth facility. Subsequent expansions in the 70s and 90s were simply overwhelmed by Yarmouth's population tsunami wave that crested just shy of 25,000. Swamped, the three associations requested municipal support in the 1990s. There are multiple studies, which Phil has behind me, spanning 15 years from 1989 to 2004, that documented this growing need and the facility shortfall. And then combined with some very bullish 21st century Cape Cod projections, it culminated in a 2004 ballot initiative for a new 36,000 square foot library funded with state grants and $6 million in town debt. The plan suffered a narrow ballot defeat and was not revived as the adverse impacts of the dot-com bubble and the Great Recession ripped through the economy. So here we are, dozen years later, listening to the board and you appointed our citizen committee to evaluate the current need. The evaluation started with going back to the basics. Do we have a verifiable demand? And the committee was very fortunate to have a ton of data, very granular data, about the public's usage patterns over time and how that, we could use that to estimate our service population that drives all the formulas. So the key things here, Yarmouth is really well-read. Lots, I mean, this is specifically, and uses library services and the readership and library usage has been stable for decades. It hasn't been going down. The data also shows that the public chooses time and selection convenience over location. They shift their use to libraries with longer hours, larger book collections, and more literary and life skill programs. Now, in addition to our year-round residents, non-resident taxpayers and, you know, both our snowbirds and our summer population, plus seasonal workers and visitors, critical to Yarmouth's large hospitality business sector, adds about 35% more volume in the peak summer months to the facility. There's a couple of technologies I want to talk about. There's a relatively high adoption rate for video streaming and smartphones that interestingly are decreasing the demand for physical DVDs, music, magazines, newspapers, public access computers, but not print books. eBook adoption has plateaued and is expected to remain a niche service. Only 6% are ebook-only readers. And these facts may surprise those who believe that physical books have been made obsolete when the data shows consistent volume. In response to the Cape's population surge over the last four decades, almost every other town has enhanced its public library services, taking advantage of state grants and private benefactor funding to modernize and expand their facilities. Yarmouth is the only town in the CLAMs network that has not expanded and has half the facility size and a third of the collection size per capita relative to towns with similar community characteristics. Other considerations is the proximity of the library services to the town's population, which is concentrated and centered near the transfer station and senior center. Another factor would be the risk of hurricane, storm, surge, water inundation. You don't want your books for $2 million underwater. And how library use and satisfaction is a component of Yarmouth's livability for residents and desirability for visitors. And finally, I guess the big thing, the challenge of changing the status quo. We all love our village libraries. That's the biggest thing. So, calculation, if we go to the next slide, to convert the facility need into capital investment. Now, this is, there's a big formula. So it takes a facility size, and those who are in the architectural business know this, facility size times building design factors, building finish qualities, which generates a construction cost, then you add in furniture, equipment, project cost, site cost, and a contingency. So Yarmouth engaged the services of Johnson Roberts, an architectural firm that has library building expertise with state grant projects, including Brewster and Mashpee, to review the state of our existing facilities and to estimate the relative cost of options to meet our community's needs. And these approximations assumed a construction cost of $400 a square foot, comparable to Eastham with its great aesthetic, disaster recovery, and green features, but a little bit higher than Mashpee, Turo, Dennis, and Osterville on an inflation-adjusted basis. Johnson Roberts concluded the best option for Yarmouth was to replace two existing town libraries with a new 26,000 square foot facility. Now, that is option number four. In large part, this was driven by the economics of the options. Single library would require the lowest capital investment with the highest likelihood of state funding. It would have the least, it would have the best ongoing operational efficiency and the least short-term public service disruption during a construction phase and in the end, provide superior convenience in terms of hours, collections, and programs for the entire community. The next best option in terms of capital investment, which is number three, would, which would be to expand just West Yarmouth, would effectively shift about 70% of Yarmouth's library services well south and west of where the town's population is concentrated. In addition, a 2004 Risk and Vulnerability Assessment Map prepared by the Cape Cod Commission listed West Yarmouth as a critical facility in the slosh zone with a high risk of water inundation during a major hurricane. Slosh is a NOAA acronym for sea, lake, and overland surges from hurricanes. And if you think about what that model is, the experience in New Mexico, Florida, is an example of the slosh zone. The estimated sources of funding calculated by the committee that are shown at the bottom of the table illustrates the importance of state grants and private benefactors, especially for options that includes South Yarmouth, which Johnson Roberts believes would get limited state grants due in part to the possible complications associated with the 1840s portion of South Yarmouth, which is about 2,600 square feet. Okay, slide five. Before all the facts were known, the committee sentiment favored renovation or expansion of the existing village facilities. I said, we love our village libraries. However, the data is so compelling that the final unanimous committee sentiment is in support of that single facility, in combination with the existing services provided by the Yarmouth Port Library Association. The committee was very impressed by the recent, and that's 2015, example of the Eastham Library leadership. They were able to go out and engage all of their community interest groups, civic, business, education, fraternal, you name it, they talked to them. And they gathered over a million dollars in donations from a town the fifth the size, a fifth the size of this town. Eastham Projects also faced its initial skeptics, but since the library opened in 2016, it has been a source of tremendous community pride and an important part of their emergency response during the 2018 winter storms, which was then reported in the New York Times. So Yarmouth can put itself in a position to be a frontrunner for the next round of state grants, which will be several years away. So we're not talking about something that's going to happen right on top of everything else that's happening right now. But the advantage of leveraging the state grants can't be underappreciated. Funding almost half of a prevailing wage public building project makes a library a best buy for any town. Most Cape towns, as I mentioned, in the CLAMs library have benefited from this, including four towns that have double dipped, they've gone back twice. Barnstable and Dennis are the only ones who did not use the state grants. They were funded exclusively by private benefactors or town debt. And Yarmouth, who has not done anything. So let's recap. Last page. Swamped by the population... Swamped by the population's surge at the end of the 20th century, we haven't kept pace, and we have a sixteen thousand square foot shortfall. That's the gap between what we have today and what we are projected to need for the next couple decades. Other Cape towns have been able to address their population growth-driven shortfall using state grants to expand their facilities. And replacing the existing town-operated library facilities with a new twenty-six thousand square foot facility appears to be the most cost-effective, efficient way to close Yarmouth's gap, with the added benefits of less short-term service disruption, improved public convenience, and improved storm surge mitigation, if cited on higher ground. Preparing a community information package will help further distill the cost. Again, this is, those cost estimates that you saw there are the first cut. They have, there's a lot of detail that would go in behind that, depending on the specific site, building finishes, and so on. But you can't do this in a vacuum. This is going to take a lot of community support. And as we learned anything from Eastham, the best way to do that is to start slow. We're going to go out and we're going to talk to the community. And so our, what we would like to do is really get to the point now where we assemble a team to solicit meaningful input from as many community constituents as possible, as well as prospective donors. Those community inputs will empower and bolden the requisite support for an informed ballot and capital campaign. Resources for the next steps are negligible. So that's sort of, you know, the ask. Most of the work would be done by citizen volunteers in collaboration with town employees. Examples of some of the out-of-pocket expenses that might be incurred for the initial phase would be architectural fees to get some renderings done and fine-tune the construction cost estimation. The next phase would be, assuming that the public and voter selectmen support, a go-for-a-state grant would include expenses for capital and ballot campaign organization and promotion. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Linda so she can field any questions that people might have.
Does anybody have anything that they would like to ask or comment on?
Well, first of all, I thank you very much for a very professional and complete presentation at this stage.
Thank you.
I think you've summarized the need as well as the path forward. As I listen to you, you're not asking for this board to commit anything financially at this stage, but it sounds like you're looking for some support, and in terms of supporting the mission that you've laid out.
Right.
Is, are you asking us to?
Well, we will be coming back for, again, some modest amounts of money to, you know, for architectural drawings, cost estimation. Again, we're going to start going back to the town employees, and we're going to start looking at site selection, options that might be out there. So, yes, in order to do that, we are going to require, you know, resources from the town.
Okay. And do you plan to do that with your existing committee?
It would not be, no, the ad hoc study committee would be coming to a close.
Okay.
So we would basically be reconstituted at this point as, I don't quite know the name, but we would be reconstituted.
We're open to names.
Okay.
To move this forward.
So are you going to be looking for additional members in order to spread the word, so to speak?
Yes.
Additional new, some may stay involved. We'd like to get people with different backgrounds that can contribute even more ideas. We talked to people at the finance committee, and some suggestions and comments were made there to think beyond the box, outside the box. So we're, we just want to position ourselves in a good place so that when grants do become available, we are ready. We don't want to be doing this in a, you know, having to hurry to get something done.
Yes, we don't want to have, you know, the town, you know, the citizens of this community going like, "I never heard about this."
Right.
By the time, by the time the state grant comes around, I'd like them to know, I'd like them not only to know about this, but to be in full support of it. And, but you can't do that in a vacuum. You have to take it public. And that takes, you know, again, just meeting after meeting after meeting. But the Eastham folks, again, gave us the roadmap to do that.
Okay. Well, I have to, I have to confess, up until about three months ago, I hadn't been in one of our libraries except for, like, an open house or something of that nature.
I hope you'll come back many times.
Well, about, about three months ago, I decided, well, I think I'd really like to read some novels and, and I've been back every couple of weeks, either to the West Yarmouth Library or to Yarmouth Port. And I've enjoyed the experiences, enjoyed the novels that I've read, and so, you know, they're wonderful facilities. I have a question about, if we construct a $26,000 new.
Twenty-six thousand square foot.
Square foot.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Wish it for easy access.
We wish, we wish.
If it was twenty-six thousand, yeah.
No.
A buck a foot, that's not bad, you know. If we construct a twenty-six thousand square foot facility, what impact do you anticipate? Or do you anticipate an impact on Yarmouth Port? Because that's a volunteer, community-based, not-on-the-tax-rules facility. Is there any way to project that?
I've met with them, you know, and I think this goes back to the trade-off between time, collection, convenience, and programming. So, to the extent that, for example, and I'll pick on children's programs specifically, Yarmouth Port has a very small proportion of the children in the community. So it would be, for example, much more cost-effective for us to really sort of provide children programming for the whole community in that particular case. In fact, when I met with them, that's exactly one of the things that they talked about.
Okay.
So, so I think what you'll find is the balance will shift based on actual usage behaviors and patterns.
So they might find some relief.
Yes.
Of, from costs that they might be incurring now to service the community and be able either to reduce resource needs or focus those on other areas.
Right.
And Yarmouth Port provides a very unique contribution to the town in their historical collections and that type of thing. So the more you have to offer to the community of Yarmouth as a whole, the better off for everybody in the town. And people don't just live in villages anymore. They go between places, they drive, and Yarmouth isn't that wide. So, you know, something that it might be more centrally located might be a better option for moms that are going between the schools and having to drop something off for their kids or picking something up for their kids, or finding that they need something that's in one library and can get it delivered to another library, you know, just one-stop shopping. It can make life a lot easier for a lot of people. Seniors are great users of public libraries, and the senior center is in that geographical area. Would make it easier for them to use the facilities, too.
Okay, okay. I'll open it up to other board questions at this point. Anyone like to jump in?
I can, I can. Here you go. That was my question, was where? Because I know we had purchased that property behind the South Yarmouth originally for the original plan that we had. So does your cost estimate take into account land acquisition in?
Well, again, our, based on an earlier meeting that we had with some of the town folks, they think that there's quite possible that we would have some good town-owned sites that might be good candidates for this. So we're just, at this point, we haven't factored that in. And again, all of these estimates are at a high enough level. Again, we were looking to understand the relative proportions at this time as opposed to the absolute number.
I think there is a figure in the.
But in, for a million dollars, I think.
Million dollars if land had to be purchased or something like that.
It's in the fees line.
Yeah.
In the fees, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I remember when we charged this committee, and you've come a long way. I think I was at the first meeting that Jane brought all the people together, and there are a lot of different groups with different interests. And so I'm sure the journey has been long, and your product, I think, is great. You had the nail on the head when, I think the reason that it failed in the first place was because of the community involvement in getting everybody on board, because there were a lot of people that still had that very strong feeling to their own section of town and keeping it what it was, so hopefully.
Yeah, that will always be the challenge.
Yeah. I'm wondering where this is on our capital planning. I know we had a ten-year, I'm just wondering where it fits.
Chris might be able to speak differently, but we have planned, I think, in 2025 potentially for this offering?
Correct, it's a few years old.
That's.
And that, you know, to correspond with the next round of state grants. Again, the trick is to be at the front of the line when the state grants are start announced.
Okay. I guess, just in addition, it's probably too preliminary for it, but I'd wonder if a piece of your presentation in the future would be what the operational savings also could be to the town instead of the operation of two.
Yeah, again.
And with that, I think you'll probably be able to provide more services and more time, which is also another benefit.
Yep.
But as long as it sticks within our overall planning, I think I'm very supportive of moving forward. I'd be interested in what your next step for architectural fees would be, and I think that we should have a discussion on creating a committee charge for the next, the next step.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the board?
I was a little bit surprised to hear that you say that there's only six percent of library users that read only ebooks. Is that correct?
It are exclusive ebooks.
Exclusive ebooks.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, the Pew Research has been tracking that for several decades now. And so what's happened is, again, it was that initial surge of, you know, to try it. It turns out that ebook users are actually just avid readers, full stop. They, in addition to reading books on their e-readers, they also read, you know, three to four additional books of print type. So it's a supplement as opposed to a replacement, by and large.
I think the big challenge is getting people out of the neighborhood mentality. Even though, I mean, West Yarmouth and South Yarmouth is a stone's throw, people have a tendency to be very neighborhood-oriented in the north side and the south side as well. But I think there's a demonstrated need, and I think you're right that it is one of the enhancements that a community, especially of this size, should have. It's a deficiency, I think, in our community, and I'd be very supportive of it. Not of the technology age, I go back to the library book era and grew up using libraries quite a bit. My mother was a teacher and was insistent that the time that I had away from getting in fights and stealing cars, I had to go to the library and read. So that was part of our daily life, really. We spent, especially through high school years, we spent a lot of times in the libraries. And I think there is a big difference between going to a library and reading an ebook, at least for me.
Yep.
And I think there are many people, especially of retirement age, that would prefer to read print books.
And like I say, well, it's, and again, we're so fortunate to be part of CLAMs as well, you know, so that we have all of those facilities available to us. It's a great, it's a great thing that we can do. And I, and again, to your point about the public face, you know, when, when people come into a town, it's like Eastham. You know, they don't go to town hall. They go to the library and get plowed.
I think, I think the committee, by the way that you'd probably be looking at, would probably be either a feasibility committee or a building committee, in terms of the name and in terms of the expertise that you would need, people that know architecture, construction, and things of that nature.
And capital campaign.
And capital campaigning, of course.
That's it.
Yeah.
But I thank you for your detailed presentation and your concern for the community in terms of addressing this deficiency that we have.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that people take advantage of the fact that Phil O'Brien is here from Johnson Roberts, so if there's any other questions that he can handle.
I know we have other, other questions from the board, but I know one thing, just in terms of shared experience, I'm very close physically to the Yarmouth Port Library, but I started out using the West Yarmouth Library and have been back and forth over the course of the last few months. And one of the frustrations that I have is that I've got to look up on my phone to figure out what the hours are because it's, and that's, that's an issue at times.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and I, I may make a selection of a library based on, oh gee, I can do that in the next couple of hours, but I know West Yarmouth is not open, or, you know, vice versa. So what do you see in terms of operating hours of one central facility?
I'd sort of want to defer that really to Jane, but in theory, you could, I mean, you would be in a position potentially to expand your hours. And I think of, you know, and I'm looking at Eric as I say, you know, I'm thinking of the golf course, you know, because we, during the summer, I mean, we operate a lot of hours. And again, the key, though, is, again, that balance, you know, we have, we have operating, we'll have some operating efficiency because you won't have to staff multiple locations with a minimum of two people per location. So as long as, and again, as long as, from a design standpoint, you have great, if you have great sightlines, this is another thing that's a real issue with some of these smaller libraries. Inappropriate behavior is a lot easier to manage if you have good sight, good clean sightlines in a facility. And a lot of our libraries have little hooks, nooks and crannies that are maybe not the best place.
Yeah, I know, Mark. You had a question or observation?
Sure, yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to thank everybody for turning out tonight. I see quite a library crowd here this evening. And obviously, the word got out, so that's great. I am a regular user of the West Yarmouth Library and the South Yarmouth Library. I feel like I raised my kids in the South Yarmouth Library. We're there all the time. And I did get the opportunity, when I lived in Yarmouth Port, to spend some time in the Yarmouth Port Library. And I think the town has been incredibly well-served by its libraries, I think, and it's great to see the level of support in each of the villages for our library system. I think it's, it's very, very strong.
It is.
And I think clearly it's reflected in the nice turnout tonight. One of the questions that I have is, well, let me just back up a little bit. I think, over the years and following this whole discussion, one of the things that I've been intrigued with is, where is the consensus in Yarmouth in terms of moving forward? That's the thing that I've always struggled with. Where do you find consensus in this community? Because you have constituencies that are very strongly supportive of the three libraries, and at least based on my experience, the challenge has always been that when you pick one area to focus on or another area, that's when the community becomes divided, all right? That's, that's what I've observed, at least over the years, being a regular user of the library. I've always been interested in hearing where people are at on this. So I'm curious, when you look at option number four.
Yep.
For example, this is where your recommendation is. Where do you think the community is on option number four? Have you had a chance to survey people and get feedback?
That's exactly what I'm saying the next step is.
Survey these options?
No, it's really sort of to go back out to the community and to see and to gauge that level of support. In other words, we know that there's a strong bias right now to maintain three.
Right.
That would be, that would be the community bias.
Who'd spend no money.
Right, and, right, and so, so the idea is, if you can show them the information, explain what's going on.
Yeah.
And help, and again, and this is going to be a listening, this is a two-way street, to listen to those concerns at the same time, to make sure either we, either the community is very supportive of this or not.
Yeah, because my caution would be is, before I camped out on option number four, I'd really want to know where the community is. I remember, just as an example, I remember with the, with the drive-in site work, I don't, I believe we turned the corner on that project when we did a fairly widespread survey, and all of a sudden, we started getting. And all of a sudden, we started getting feedback from the community in terms of what the people of Yarmouth wanted. And it was pretty clear, now, some could make arguments that maybe the survey wasn't broad enough. But from the surveys that I looked at and from the information that I saw, we got a huge response. And folks pretty much were very clear on what they wanted to see happen with that site. And I think it gave the project momentum. And so I honestly think that something to think about would be, would be some kind of survey that would help us see, because what I'm nervous about is the community getting divided again. Because we've been down this road before, and that's the thing that makes me a little, that makes me a little bit nervous in terms of going forward. But I think the more there's public support that can be identified for these options, for the recommended option, I think if you have that behind you, I think it'll, it'll, it'll be critically important in terms of moving forward. I know there are people that, you know, I know right off the bat that are going to be insistent that we don't abandon the other two. So that's going to be part of the conversation. We build a new library, then what happens to the other facilities, the other buildings? And so I think this happens to be an exercise where the challenge is going to be finding consensus and really sustaining that dialogue. And so to the extent that you're focused on that and trying to do that, I think that's incredibly important.
That is the next.
But my biggest fear is, you know, is the community once again divided. Because that's how these projects have had trouble in the past.
Can I just say that we wanted to make sure that we made public our recommendation in front of this group? And felt that it had to come, that had to be the timeline, that you folks heard it from us publicly before we went out and talked to community groups about the data that we had gotten, the relative costs between the different options. And, and then, based on the data is what we made our recommendation. Now, then, going forward, based on data, we would make, you know, we would bring that to the public. It would be the next, we would hope that the next committee would, there would be different subcommittees that would focus on those different aspects, site, you know, capital campaign, bringing public information. And really getting out to all of the different fraternal groups and different groups in the, in the community so that they know exactly where we're coming from.
Yeah, I think, I think quite frankly, you've done a great job in identifying the need. And I do believe that the people will rally, to the extent that we can find a consensus in terms of the next stage. I think the community will rally around it, but like I said before, that's, that's where we've had difficulty in the past. So to the extent that you're trying to do that, you want to get these options out into the community, get community feedback and so forth. I think that's a terrific idea on, on doing that. I would recommend even thinking about surveys and finding ways to get information out there as well. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sure, Eric?
First, let me start by thanking all of you for coming out. And I just want to say that, you know, these, these updates are not only the opportunity for you to showcase all the hard work that you've all done for the people in the town, but they're also the opportunity for you to tell us what you need us to do. And I want to make sure that we're very clear on that, and I'll come back to that in a minute. When we were talking about the 10-year plan, Chris said that, you know, there was a library project perhaps in six years. And Richard, you said that that aligns with the next round of grant funding, so.
Theoretically, again, we, it hasn't been announced, but, you know, based on past.
So that seems like a long way out. I mean, how frequently, well, several questions. How frequently do these things come around? How often are you in the queue, so to speak? And what do you need from us to, you know, fill that gap in time? You know, I think you said that grants, well, you didn't say that grants could be used for feasibility studies and planning and that sort of thing. So how do we fill that gap from where you are today and where you need to be to, not only to prepare to apply for those grants, but to get the money that you need to, you know, do the planning and the design so that when you finally have a grant, you can then present it to town meeting?
There are two forms of grants. There's a planning and design grant, and then there's the construction grant. And typically, the planning and design grant is two years before the construction grant. And the planning and design grant, I think it's in the neighborhood of $50,000 that you could receive. And that you can use for feasibility studies and hiring OPMs and things like that. That's the kind of thing that we see the next iteration of the committee really getting to know and understand the timeline and exactly what needs to be in place. We have certain documents that have to be in place and attached to any applications that go to the state. And we have to make sure that those are up to date and contain all the information. We've got a document that we've been working with, with the consultants. We know that has to be updated. So that kind of thing is going to be worked on during that time. And then building consensus, getting, finding out about fundraising, capital campaigns and things like that. Because should we be lucky enough to apply for and receive a grant, there would be a component of money that has to be in the form of donations. And you don't do that overnight. There is a timeframe that you run a capital campaign, but you have to prepare for it.
To answer your specific question, too, the last grant was the 2015 to 2019 grant. So it appears that they run about every five years. In the total, there's been, since the, since the grant round started, there's been 195 grants permitted. So of which the Cape got its fair share of that.
If I may?
Sure.
I'm Jane, I'm the library director. The latest update from the Mass Border Library Commissioners is that there's a request before the House Ways and Means now for a $200 million budget for construction. But there's also a waiting list of 10 libraries, 10 communities.
It's not bad, 20 million apiece?
Right. Well, and they also have a cap of 20 million per year of giving away, but they're looking for 25 million to raise that cap as well. So they're looking at 2021, FY 2021 for the next planning and design round. But the list is already 10 libraries, 10 communities long. See, that's why it's hard to tell when. Because each of those communities will then need matching funds and approvals in, on different timeframes, like Linda mentioned.
Yeah, because not everybody who even applies for a grant gets one, sometimes, you know, similar to what happened here. You, you get into the queue, but then if it fails at town meeting or at the ballot box, then you're off the list.
So, you know, just the first part of my question, let's be very clear, because this is your opportunity. What's your ask tonight? What do you need us to do to assist you in moving forward?
Okay. We're going to authorize a new committee.
Sure.
We're going to authorize probably about $50,000 in, and again, just to be confirmed, for the information that we need to generate that community information package.
There's a question on that, though, as far as how involved we can be in terms of spending funds on a campaign.
Not, not a campaign, this is just to produce the, you know, this, it's the site selection, architectural, so we can go back out to the community and say, this is what you would potentially be interested in looking at.
Was there a free cash grant request this year? There is not at this time.
Right, not at this time.
So we'd be looking at that?
Next year.
Well, it's not too late to put it together. Yeah, I wasn't aware that I'd have to catch up with Jane on that. But certainly, it's something, there is capacity in the free cash list that we have. We're still making a few alterations.
I just wonder if it's so early, I, I just get nervous that if we're not actually going to do the plan for five years, how much of that information, if we do it now, would change in that amount of time? So perhaps waiting to the next fiscal year and starting that process. I think now, before we start that process, would be a good time to make sure we're building consensus and make sure that we are picking the right plan everyone's going to support before we invest the money. Jane, you've done a survey before, you did a very extensive survey.
We did it as part of our strategic planning for FY 2016. So it's time to do another one, because it's almost been five years?
Yeah.
Is there any way that CPA funding can utilize, is there any?
I don't think it would fall into that. I, I think a couple of things to consider would be trying to line up that feasibility and grant, planning, grant idea. I mean, one, one thought is, if you put it, if we put a free cash article together, we'd have some seed money available to get some, it sounded like there's some preliminary paperwork that has to be warmed up. And it can stay live by our bylaws for two years, and we can pick at it as they need it. I mean, one of the things that, if that cycle happens to move up a little bit and we're not ready for it, it would be, you know, shame on us if we weren't ready. So I'm a little bit mindful of that. But I'd feel better if we had some resources at our disposal that if they needed it, we could tap it.
Yeah, and again, this is, this is going to be over several years. I'm not, you know, this is not something that you have to certainly.
That falls right into the question I was going to ask, is what is the timeline for the 50,000? I mean, would you be comfortable with 25 this year out of free cash and 25 the next year? Does that make sense?
I'm doing this in the back of my head real fast, but yeah, that's the sort of thing that I'm thinking.
My concern with that is that if you, if, if something like that shows up, you know, just out of the clear blue, without having first built consensus, then you risk dividing people. You know, I.
Marching down the road that we were on.
Yeah, you know, I, I would prefer to see, you know, this on our radar for next year's round of free grants after some, you know, some consensus building and some community outreach has been undergone so that we don't surprise people by this stuff. Because the worst thing you can do is, you know, have people standing where you are and say, we didn't know anything about this. What's this for? So.
It's an information campaign.
Sure, so, so, so some of the money then would also, you know, that's when I mentioned, you know, like 25,000, some of that would be for that survey work that you were talking about.
I mean, I suppose you could couch an article such that it's money to be used to determine the feasibility of the future of a library project, you know? And it would allow the flexibility to use some resources to capture some grant activities, mailings, you know, to do some outreach in the neighborhoods without making a commitment as to where you're going.
An article or?
An article, free cash, yes, part of the free cash.
Part of the free cash article.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's interesting, because I think this, this presentation is certainly something that would go well at town meeting and in support of a free cash grant. I think it demonstrates, you know, a solid amount of work and so forth, so.
Well, you know, I got to tell you, I'm sitting here looking at Jeff, who's piecemealed his project together over the last few years with no outreach money at all. So I guess I have a little bit of a hard time if we're going to start doing campaigns. I mean, I'm all in favor of doing it. If, if a survey costs money, I thought the surveys were free. We've done Survey Monkey, which doesn't cost anything. I'd really want to see what that money goes to. And I kind of agree with Eric that this, this is a time that we should constitute the committee and look at this for next year. I don't think we should jump ahead in, in what our planning is. We've got a lot on our plate, and not to say that the libraries aren't important, but I think it's, it's a process. And I think, I really think that knowing what that money is, just giving 25,000 to say, you know, I mean, we need a plan. We need, we need somebody to say, here's an architectural contract that's going to cost X amount of dollars, and we need to know what that is. I don't think just handing out money is a good idea to plan a campaign where we've had so many capital projects in the past that have had no money for capital planning. That doesn't make it right, but if we're going to start something, I think we need to be consistent.
But we do thank you for this evening, because we wanted to make the recommendation. We wanted to keep you posted on where the study committee has been for the past couple of years and plans to go for the next couple of years.
Further input from the board?
I would support an article as a free cash grant to, for feasibility purposes without committing to a specific location of the, I think, this is an important enough project that we have to put some financial support behind it so that you can get going. There would be costs involved in that kind of outreach. I'm sure those costs will be monitored. And there can be a carryover for what, up to two years on that, right? So whatever isn't used the first year, I'm sure will be available to continue those efforts in year two. So I would support that.
I would as well.
I don't want to be, you know, I just want to point out that, you know, you have time. You know, this isn't immediate and.
It's important, but not urgent.
And, and, and putting money out, you don't even have a committee yet. And for, for me to sit here and say, we're going to, we're going to give you money, you know, this has gone badly recently. But, you know, for me to say that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to slate this money, and then we're going to figure out what you're going to do with it later on. I mean, I'm very supportive, but, you know, I, I think there is an order to things. In my mind, that, that doesn't fit what I think would, would be putting you down the path of success.
I appreciate that.
I think what you're hearing is, you know, an expression of support, and at the same time saying, give us some details as to how you would use the money. And, and I think the board would feel more comfortable with, with that approach. And, you know, and, you know, you've heard some members say, yeah, we're willing to put the 25 on the table this year. And I, I have some reservations about doing that until we have something more concrete in front of us. But, but I think you have our support in terms of, I, I still think, and this is, you know, based upon how much time we might have available. I think this would be a, one way to communicate at town meeting. And even without a request for funds, as an education sort of thing.
Is it possible to have a town meeting article that's informational only? I, I was under the impression that, that wasn't, that it wasn't accepted.
I suppose, yeah, it'd probably be along the lines of an informational piece. We could work with the moderator to discuss how it would work on this. I mean, I have seen past article language that talked about to see if town meeting would support XYZ, whatever it would be. You know, so we can, in the coming days, take a look at.
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we take a look at that, see if we can come up with some sort of?
Get at it tonight.
Yeah, we could put a placeholder on it.
I think that right now, we don't have enough information to really educate the public. It would be more of a question and answers scenario that we probably, I, I guess I'm hesitant to, to support that at the level we're at now, because I think it's going to leave more people questioning than getting answers. I think that there will be time for that, probably two years or so before you get the funding. But I, I'm not sure we're at that point that you have enough consensus.
If we have your, you know, your, what I'm hearing is a lot of support here from, from all of you so to, to continue with that community outreach, to get the, you know, to get, build that consensus. And so that will be, I think, the, the key task for that next group to work on.
I think we should come up with a timeline. I think this year, the, the committee, perhaps next year, a free cash grant, move further with architectural design, apply for a grant. I mean, I support moving forward, but I, I agree with Eric that I think there's, there's steps that we have to take.
At what point would it be appropriate to ask for money for the next phase? If it's not now, is it a year from now?
We're hearing you, I think as a board, we're committing.
I think what we'd like to see is some concrete items in, in a proposal. Something that is pretty definite in terms of what you'd be spending the money on.
But how many months away, like six months down the road or?
Yeah, you need to come to us, you know, it, it would be easier to, to come in a, you know, like a November or an October, sometime in that timeframe, so that we have some advance notice for the next town meeting. And, you know, if we happen to have a special town meeting in, in the fall, you know, that could accelerate that, that capability. Maybe beyond your capacity to respond, but, you know, because we're, we're probably moving in that direction of having things, having a special town meeting in, in the fall, addressing a variety of other issues. And it might be appropriate to have something of this nature. It, we may not be able to appropriate money at that time. But, you know, I still think there's, there's a way to have some, some presentation time available.
Yeah, just if I may, Mr. Chairman, there, there was an article in Town Meeting 2004, it was an informational article. And it says, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Yarmouth Library Building Committee and/or the Town Library Board and/or Yarmouth Board of Selectmen to apply for any state funds which may be available to defray all or part of the cost of design construction in equipping of a new or renovated library and to further authorize the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen to accept and expend any such funds when received without further appropriation." You know, that, that would be one of those, I think, you know, if you're trying to jumpstart community-based information on this topic, an informational article like this, because who knows what we would encounter over the next 18 to 24 months? But it would also, could link the presentation to the article at town meeting. And it doesn't, it doesn't commit us to any actual money. commit us to any actual money to date. By that time, we'll have a charge in front of the board. We'll have a lot of this timeline. I'm mindful of the momentum that's been built to this point.
Right.
In Town Meeting is a decision point whether or not we would add an article like this would have to be made as early as tonight, because tonight's the night, we could close it.
Right.
But, you know, I, what I've heard listening here is the importance of getting the community aware of what's going on and, you know, four or 500 people planning to come to the first Saturday in May, it's a good opportunity, you know?
Yeah, okay. At this point, I, do we actually need a, just kind of a consensus move forward?
What we could do is when we put the articles in front of you, I think it's going to be, it could be something like along the lines of article number 49, we could have a placeholder.
Okay.
And then don't forget, as time gets close to the town meeting, we can decide to not, it wasn't ready for primetime, it can be withdrawn, so no harm done.
All right. Okay, let's move in that direction then, that's fine. Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Okay. All right, we're going to move forward with the Water Resources Advisory Committee update. We'll allow a minute or two here for the room to clear out. Going to begin the presentation here. Okay. All right. All right, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Okay, I guess I'm going to start with introductions. Obviously, everybody knows I'm Kurt Sears. This is Dave Young from CDM, Karen Green and Jeff Colby from staff, and Rich B. Envenu behind me. As you know, we've been meeting, this is my own editorial. Tonight, I think we'll probably generate as many questions as we get answers, so I wouldn't sweat what we don't know. I think the exercise here is to present you what we know so far and then get some feedback and see if we're going in the right direction. So, membership is Lisa Cody. As you see, we have different parts of town. John Deliso from Lewis Bay, Tom Durkin from the Conservation Commission, Reenie Hammond is a member at large. We have Charlie Hallway, it says Paul O'Brien, but Charlie Hallway's filled in. Tom Roach from Bass River, Lee Rowley from the Planning Board. And unfortunately, we already had a resignation, so we're still looking to fill a seat on the committee. And then Rich B. Envenu is going to explain what we've been doing so far.
Well, thanks for having us. I feel like the library discussion is going to be a similar discussion as what we'll have by the time we get to the end of this because there's been a lot of getting up to date to come to the board, to update you as to where we are and to get some direction to make sure we're heading in the right direction. So I'm just going to cover some basics and we're going to shoot through this presentation and then try to address your questions. But how did we get here? And as you all know, we have a nitrogen issue. So, back in the 1950s to 2010, this map indicates the significant population growth and density growth of the town. All those, all that growth resulted in septic systems being installed at homes and commercial businesses. And as we all know, that nitrogen seeping into our estuaries and watersheds represents 85% of the controllable nitrogen with fertilizers and stormwater runoff being the rest. And it's degrading our watersheds. And so about 10 years ago or a little bit more, we participated in the Mass Estuaries Project, which measured the amount of nitrogen in our watersheds. More importantly, it indicated the amount that we need to remove in order to get it to a certain standard or water quality standard. And so this map shows our three impacted watersheds, Lewis Bay, Parkers River and the Bass River, and it indicates the percentage removal of nitrogen in order to achieve the, the standards that have been set forth. So why are we doing this? Trying to protect our drinking water quality and remediate pollution of ponds and estuaries through nitrogen. We also have an issue of contaminants of emerging concern, CECs, which is not part of our mandate at this point. So we've been focused on a plan to remediate nitrogen. But there's also other considerations. We've got the CECs. We also have issues of economic development, which you'll see in a moment is an important consideration. So how could we do that? There's really three ways. We could leave it to individual property owners, you could address it as a community, and then what's, what's been new since the last effort is address it as a community but with regional partners. And so those are the three things we've been considering as we get, as the committee gets up to speed. One of the things that the committee discusses and is well aware of is the cost of doing nothing. To the extent you consider that an option, it has an impact. I'm starting at the bottom here. That's basically where we are now, and we're experiencing continued stagnation, decline of our commercial tax base and an impact to tourism. We have an impact to our environment and so continuing to degrade. And doing nothing could lead to potential litigation and loss of control. And so the common example that you hear recently, things have moved a lot, moved along since there are more recent efforts in history where there's actual lawsuits against private property owners in Harwich by the Conservation Law Foundation, and we'll be monitoring the effects of those lawsuits and the results of those suits. That's the concern, that you lose control over the plan and your ability to develop that plan and therefore potentially the costs. Regardless of those lawsuits, we may, or as a result of them, may have regulatory ramifications. And what we'd be looking at there is mitigation in nitrogen-sensitive watersheds. There's approximately 10,000 homeowners in those nitrogen-sensitive watersheds, and it's a conservative estimate of $20,000 of a capital cost for a replacement system and a $2,600 annual O&amp;M cost. That results in $200 million of homeowner investment that is borne by the individual homeowner with a operating cost of $26.5 million annually. Excludes the cost of more expensive commercial systems and maintenance of those systems or for IA systems for new innovative alternative septic systems. And the problem with that, above and beyond the cost, is based on the work that this committee has been done and the efforts in the past have shown that these systems alone do not, do not mediate the problem. They don't remove enough nitrogen to achieve the goals that have been set forth for us. And so because of that, the committee hasn't really been considering that as a really viable option. They've been looking at community-wide solutions. They've met several times over the last three months. All our meetings are on YouTube. We have a town YouTube channel, and all those meetings have been recorded and are posted there. And they've been, we also have a website, Water Resource Advisory Committee website, and our meeting minutes and agendas and materials are included on that website, so they're readily accessible. So we've been getting up to date on a number of issues, basically on the planning efforts that have been undertaken up through 2016, updating those plans, looking at the changes in those plans and what's new, particularly regional efforts, and trying to give some direction and some recommendation to this board as to how we could move forward. There's still a lot of work to be done. We're at a very high level at this point and a lot of details to follow. We felt important to get in front of the Board of Selectmen before we got too far down the road, similar to your just previous discussion with the library. So the primary recommendation to date, summarizing it, is that centralized wastewater treatment is the most cost-effective solution for the community. We believe it has a similar or lower capital overall cost, but certainly has a lower ongoing operating and maintenance cost. It achieves the best nitrogen removal results. It has the ability to address CECs in the future as those arise and become issues. And importantly, it provides substantial value to homeowners and businesses and the opportunity for some significant economic development. I'm going to pause right there for a second and ask if anybody on our group here has any additional comment. Very good. Also part of the package that was sent to you earlier was an economic development report. And in order to inform our efforts and the public as we move forward as to the benefits, not only are we trying to achieve nitrogen removal, there are some economic development benefits that come along with that. And so we had the Don Hugh Institute from UMass come in and do a study and interview several town businesses and issue a report, which also cited other economic development studies and efforts that have been undertaken in the past. Basically, what that report indicates is that there's significant pent-up demand for development, that our businesses in town do not want to be involved in the wastewater business because their onsite systems are expensive and limit the expansion of those businesses and therefore they're restrained from reaching their market potential. That inability to invest in their businesses has resulted in some stagnation and decline. As a matter of fact, there's been a 35% decline in, in commercial values over the past 10 years compared to our overall tax base. It's led to, when this report cites comparative statistics to other communities, in particular Barnstable, and where our rooms and meals tax underperforms compared to other communities. Our new growth tax rate, our new growth rate for property tax, I should say, is very low, There's a range of values, but roughly more, or more or less, our neighboring communities on Cape Cod are about 1.5% plus or minus, about double of where we are. And the, a couple of significant items in that study to report on is that everyone seems to be reporting that the number one impediment to significant redevelopment is the absence of wastewater treatment. That also comes from the Unitap report.
Unitap.
And a Uli-Tap. And that for every dollar spent on water resource infrastructure results in $15 of private investment. So the bottom line is there's some significant economic development, and I'm going to cut to the chase here, and, and the bottom line on this slide is, as we move forward and can realize that benefit, there certainly would be the ability to utilize that as part of our cost recovery program. And so just some examples and some estimated numbers here that for every $100 million in investment approximates, in our case, about $1 million in new property tax revenue. Doubling of our new growth rate from that 0.77 to just about 1.5% results in $420,000 additional in new growth each year, which compounds and becomes larger each year. If we achieve the results that the town of Barnstable is achieving as far as rooms and meals tax, as a, on a per facility basis, we're generating $260,000 additional annually. Along with those benefits come the ability to more easily expand or add bedrooms for residential homeowners and on the commercial side, the ability to expand the business and their footprint. So the Water Resource Advisory Committee has been meeting, getting up to date on all these factors, and based on all the information they've had to date, the basic consensus is that we want to move forward on educating the public on a plan that's very similar to the 2016 plan. The difference is being that we now are evaluating some regional partnerships. There's ongoing discussions with the towns of Dennis and Harwich on a, what's been called the DHY Regional Partnership, and those need to continue to see what economies of scale it may deliver and benefits it may deliver to participating in something like that. We're also talking with the town of Barnstable, particularly with West Yarmouth, is their ability to send some over to their treatment plant, perhaps in exchange for doing some effluent discharge back in Yarmouth. And so that's an ongoing discussion. In both of those regional partnership arrangements, the key point to remember here is that's really basically to do treatment and perhaps discharge. But the main, main part, main cost of our system would be a collection system that we've control, and that represents about 70% of the overall cost of a program. So we're maintaining a large control over the vast majority of the cost of a system. So what does it look like? We've got some very high-level numbers at the moment, and on the outside, we're looking at a total investment of $400 million with annual operating costs of $10 million at full build-out. That's build-out over 40 years, roughly one phase, eight phases, one phase for every five years for a total of eight phases. And that addresses our nitrogen removal concerns in each of our nitrogen-sensitive watersheds. It sounds like a lot, and it is, but we've done this before with our municipal water system. And what I would caution everybody to consider is that keep an open mind, and really, we need to focus on the first phase because we have been always maintaining almost all of our projects, but this would be no exception, an adaptive management approach. As things change, we adapt to that change and implement where we can. For example, just some of the things that we've been talking about as how we would find the insists a couple of years ago have changed because we have some new legislation that allows us to do some new things. We also think we, there's some significant opportunities for cost reduction, especially when we consider our regional approaches, and we'll talk about those in a little bit. So here's what the overall build-out plan looks like, similar to what you saw a couple of years ago. But again, it's almost too much to consider all at once because this is 40 years out. So let's focus on what we want to do in the near term, and that would be Phase One. Similar to what the Phase One was in the past with a little bit of a change, but the benefits of it is it addresses nitrogen removal in all three watersheds of immediate concern. This represents a sewer pipe, the main collector pipe, for example, down Route 28 from the Barnstable town line to the Dennis town line, with everybody that abuts Route 28 being a participant in that phase. It's really sets the stage for all future phases and allows us to really do a lot of adaptive management as need, demand or opportunity provides because we've done the whole stretch of the town and would either be sending, in this case, at this moment, we're counting on the Buck Island Road site at the DPW in Yarmouth as our plant site, but alternatively, if you did a regional partnership to a regional plant in Dennis at their DPW site. In any event, this phase would accommodate either approach and the future development. Being down our main economic development quarter, it provides significant economic development opportunities for all the commercial businesses along that route. This phase is be the most, one of the more expensive phases because we're building a plant along with the collection pipe, and that's at the high level now at $115 million. And so we think we have some opportunities for cost reduction. And so, for example, especially following a regional approach, we think we might have a strong case to get a subsidized loan. We didn't bake that into this example here, but that would be an example where we could achieve some economies of scale and some cost reduction by participating with regional partners. But a $115 million, 30-year loan, we think we would have a very good chance of qualifying for a zero-interest loan through the SRF program, would be about $3.8 million annually in debt service. And if that were the case, that results in a 64 cent increase in our tax rate per thousand. So for every $100,000 of property valuation, a taxpayer, if this was fully on the tax rate, would be $64. I ran the numbers on a $300,000 home, would be $192, and a $500,000 home is $320. This is what Phase One looks like. This is Route 28 with all the abutting parcels. The change here from the last Phase One proposal a couple of years ago is that the committee felt strongly that we should provide economic development opportunities and that perhaps could be a source for funding future phases, or partially funding future phases, by including South Shore Drive with the motels that are in restaurants that are down at that end of the town. So one of the next heavy lifts that the committee has is to talk about, we kind of know the parameters now of where we stand. How do we go around approaching funding that? And the details are to be worked out, especially depending on... And the details are to be worked out, especially depending on the direction we go, but they have established some core principles that they want to be following. Nearly everyone contributes in some manner to our problem, and therefore, everyone in the community benefits from clean water, and therefore, everyone should participate in the solution. And so, and where possible, we ought to find dedicated funding sources, and those sources and all program revenues should not go towards other town programs. So when we say we want to raise money for our water resource cost recovery program, they would be dedicated to that program and not used elsewhere. Those that contribute more to the problem, there is a sense that should contribute more to the solution. We want to minimize placing a cost on the general tax rate. Also, to the extent we do realize these economic benefits, development benefits that we think will occur, we should be using those to mitigate the cost to everybody. So what does that actually translate to, practically speaking, over the next few years on a Phase One cost recovery program? We now have the opportunity to do a municipal water infrastructure investment fund, this is similar to the CPA tax, and so what's been under discussion is what's the approach to adopting something similar, perhaps in conjunction with the reduction of the CPA. But just for a frame of reference, the maximum we could levy would be a 3% surcharge, which generates about $1.7 million in annual revenues. So that would be a partial solution to our Phase One funding. We do have on the books now a project for Cape Cod Tech and perhaps some other projects coming down, and we align our project to take advantage of the drop-off of that debt as it occurs, so that we minimize any impact or spikes in our tax rates. In the parentheses here, we also kind of indicate which principles these are aligning to, and so, along the principle that those that use more should, or contribute more to the problem should pay a bit more. That's why we are considering looking at a flow-based betterment program. So we have some very significant water users and nitrogen contributors, and those should pay, perhaps pay more than a single-family residential or a duplex that's along Route 28. And so we'll be looking at that. As well as a 25% capital surcharge on operating rate. Again, that would be charging somebody that is using more and perhaps contributing more to the problem, paying a bit more than the average. Also new, just breaking in the last month, is the short-term rental bill has passed, and we have to figure out, we don't know where that stands and what that looks like yet, but certainly we'll incorporate our participation in that fund, perhaps, as to how this could offset costs that we are funding locally. And finally, how would we recover the benefits of economic development? It's hard to commit those to funding a plan until they're realized, but we definitely would be working with our finance team and come back to the Board of Selectmen on some financial policy, management policy recommendations. So for example, if our normal new tax levy growth is $300,000, just as a number, and because of economic development opportunities that we're now seeing upwards of $500,000, perhaps we could have a board policy that said any amount over a certain amount would go towards funding wastewater projects. That'd be an example of taking advantage and utilizing that growth to pay for the There are a lot of timing issues, and we don't have time to do everything we need to do, and as you heard with the library project, there is a ton of outreach and information that needs to be exchanged with various members throughout the community. And so at the May 2019 town meeting, what we're really looking for is a continuation of the planning process, we're not having a heavy ask, I don't contemplate having a heavy ask for any of these things at that point. But we do want, need to move forward, and the next kind of time-sensitive issue is aligning our Phase One construction to coincide with Route 28 roadwork as a cost-reduction measure. There are four significant Route 28 projects that we need to coordinate with the State Department of Transportation, so that we do not have to pay for the repaving of Route There'll be a future, if we decide to pursue a regional partnership with Dennis and Yarmouth, I mean Dennis and Harwich, we'd need a town meeting vote to do so, or there perhaps might be an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Barnstable that the Board of Selectmen would need to consider if we reached agreement on that end. We would need design funds for our potential Phase One. We need funds on construction of Phase One, and this is all contemplating, all these cost estimates and design and planning estimates are based on construction beginning in 2021. So we have a little bit of time, but not that much, which is why we're in front of you today, to make sure we're heading in the right direction and to do the outreach that's necessary. I think the committee feels that if we're having a fall town meeting, that that would be a significant milestone for us to present some of the information at that time. Here's an exit map of our Route 28 roadwork projects that we need to plan and some of the timelines involved with those, and our next steps. We've got a lot to do and a lot to update you on, but the key thing here is after our meeting tonight and after receiving some direction from you, is to start doing a bunch of outreach. And to that extent, to that end, we are expecting to do a lot of one-on-one with community groups and civic groups, one-on-one with business owners and high-water users and other interested individuals. As a matter of fact, I went over to Cape Media Center today and recorded a video that we'll be able to push out on our social media accounts, and we have a series of videos and printed material that we're in development that we'll be using to communicate the message and let people know all the information they need to know to make an informed decision. My last little plug here, go to our website, the Water Resource Advisory Committee page, for all the information we've got today on the status of our program. All our meetings are recorded on Town YouTube site. You can contact me at that phone number or that email, and I'll get back to you and set up a meeting or provide some information the best I can. And something that's new is we have a constant contact email list that's ready to go, we just need people to sign up to get the information. And so you can go to our website, and right on the homepage, there's a Sign Up for Wastewater Updates tab, or on the Water Resource Advisory Committee page, there's a tab to click to sign up and provide your email to get updates as they come out. Or you can use your smartphone and text to the number 22828, the word Yarmouth Water, all one word, it'll ask you to supply your email, and you'll be signed up. I'll leave it there and wait for your questions.
I guess, I kind of expected to hear a little bit more tonight about progress with the towns of Dennis and Harwich regarding the wastewater agreement, and I don't know if we're addressing that or not tonight.
If I could, as you know, the DHY-enabling legislation won't get filed, I think it actually might have just been this week, get assigned to a committee and going through that. So one of the things the larger group has been looking at is trying to work with Representative Whalen to find out when it might get a reading up at the legislative level to get passage. We're not so hopeful that it's before May, but we're definitely hopeful that it would be before a fall town meeting. I believe the group meets next on February 14th. We've asked the legislative delegation, Senator Seer, Representative Pecu's in leadership, and Representative Whalen to attend to give us an update. By that time, the legislation should have been assigned to committee, we'll know the chairmanship of it, and be able to start charting its progress. The thought is, is that at that point, once we get a better understanding of that, I think, and the group can correct me if I'm wrong, we're targeting some point in March, late March, early April, to bring the three towns back together, to the three boards, the Board of Selectmen, the finance committees, and the advisory water committees for each town, just like we did a while back, and give you the update at that time. Prior to that, though, our own internal group will work to finalize our own strategy as it relates to where our agreement desire is, and so I would assume, you know, probably by the end of February, the agreement, to the extent that it can be agreed upon as individual towns, has been done, and then it'll have to wait till that big three-town event to have the final details hashed out.
Okay, all right. I know there were some issues being thrown around, and I don't know where that stands at this stage, but, okay. I'll open it up to the board for questions at this point.
Thank you for the presentation. Certainly a lot of information, and I just want to focus on one thing. You know, twice in there, it referenced evaluating partnerships. Is this an independent plan? Is this a Yarmouth-only plan?
Yeah, what was presented to you with those cost options was the cost if Yarmouth had to do it on its own, which is the highest cost that we think we will have, which is why we didn't provide you a lot of details, and we need to work with this three-town group to determine what the direction of that is. To the extent it offers cost savings, then that would be an option that would be presented to the board as to what direction we're going to go with that.
And it's your intent to try to sell this plan and bring it back to town meeting? Similar to, I mean, you said yourself, it's very similar to the plan that was rejected overwhelmingly in 2000, it seems like longer than three years ago, but I'll take your word for it if you say it was 2016.
2011.
2011.
2011, was that last time it was in front of the town?
Did the presentation say 16?
It did say 16.
Wow, okay.
It did say 16.
All right. I thought it was longer than that.
The reference to 2016 was last time that we had a robust discussion with the Board of Selectmen about the wastewater plan. The reference to 2016 was when the concept was introduced with regard to all of Route 28 for the collection system versus just the west side, Parker's River to the Barnstable Town Line was the plan when that was defeated in 2011. So there were some changes contemplated in 2016, I think that was the reference to 2016.
I'd like to hear what other people have to say, but thank you.
So, the 115, actually doesn't even sound so scary now after we just went through the school process. The 115, does that include the partnership?
No, the 115 was if Yarmouth had to go it alone, a plant at Buck Island Road in our Phase One collection system.
Okay.
So the thought would be, if we had the opportunity for the regional partnership, hopefully that cost would go down, and we would no longer do a plant at Buck Island Road, we'd be sending it to a plant in Dennis at their DPW site.
I think one of the things that we've learned since 2011 certainly is the economic drop-off and, you know, I think the plan has been changed, actually, because when we did talk about it in 2016, it was redeveloped to do Route 28 first, and it made sense. Whereas the original plan, I don't think, did Route 28 for the economic development as a first phase, is that correct?
It did, from Barnstable to Parker's River, I believe it was.
Parker's River, but not the whole thing.
West Yarmouth.
I appreciate your presentation, I think it's been good, there's a lot, a lot of work has already been done. What is going to be the ask for additional planning at town meeting? I haven't seen that dollar number yet.
Yeah, similar to the last couple of years, it's $200,000.
$200,000.
It's a separate standalone article, again, to continue the wastewater planning efforts and discussions with our neighboring communities.
It's going to get us what? Discussions?
Yes, that's, we're looking to update not only our comprehensive wastewater plan, but also models associated with those discussions with the neighboring communities. There is some water recharge modeling that needs to be done, and some other components that are associated with that. There's outreach, the committee has talked about what that might look like and how that might be structured that would be a part of that funding request as well.
And are the neighboring communities also committing funds to that same regard?
In the neighboring communities, they also have wastewater planning funds. We have not discussed what that would look like beyond this grant. Right now, we are working through the funds associated with a grant for the DHY discussions as well as what the Barnstable partnership might look like. We're not at the end of those funds, but we do expect that to, that funding cycle and work to wrap up at the end of this fiscal year, what that looks like in the next fiscal cycle. We haven't had those detailed discussions with the communities, but yes, they would have to fund their component of those discussions.
I'd like to see, you know, if we're going to plan in a direction on a three-town solution, it would be nice that all three towns are participating in that planning. I'd hate to waste money for us to plan on something that may or may not occur.
I can answer part of that, and I think that feeds into the DHY agreement, in that if we pass the agreement, you're on the hook for the plant and the common structures. So for, say Dennis or Harwich to say, yes, we're going to join DHY, it would not be wise of them not to continue with their plans to actually implement this, because they're going to have to pay for their share of the capital, ownership of the plant and common facilities, which are pump stations and piping.
But we're not quite at that stage, asking for funds for that.
No, but all three towns are moving, actually, we're kind of behind the other two towns in some of these aspects. Harwich is actually going to change some of their phasing to take advantage of the new plant in Dennis sooner than they would have normally. So from my perspective, it seems like the other two towns are moving forward also right now. As a matter of fact, Harwich has had some good marketing materials that we kind of want to copy to use in our efforts in this town, so.
Did they create those for their partnership with Chatham on the other side when they, or is it specific to this?
And I believe they have another ask going to their town meeting this year, too. Did Chris say that?
The marketing materials that current references were used for their previous two-town meeting efforts to sell the wastewater program, and part of that was the connection between East Harwich sewers going, and that wastewater being conveyed to the Chatham Treatment Plant.
Okay.
And to answer your other question, I believe the other two towns do have town meeting articles.
I think another thing that changed in the 2016 is that we heard loud and clear that it's unaffordable for, to put this on the tax roll. So I think a lot of the cost recovery things, a lot of it's hard to quantify because, you know, we're making a lot of assumptions, but overall, I think the infrastructure fund is something that we certainly need to do. And one of the things that I personally have talked about with the expansion of rooms and meals tax is the high tourism, high peak, you know, is one of the reasons I think that we supported that expansion legislation and that they're contributing to the problem, we're having to build an infrastructure that meets the peak demands. And so I think that the rooms and meals tax addition with the new law should go and be earmarked for wastewater, that's my own personal opinion. The problem is, it's coming in one bucket. So the expansion from what we have now, which is going to also impact other things like our tourism revenue preservation fund and other things, but it's not going to be split for, you know, the Airbnb and the extended rooms, it's going to, we're going to get one line item. So perhaps we need a fiscal policy that says anything over the 2.5% growth gets earmarked for wastewater. One of the other concerns I had last time around that I don't think was ever really addressed was, I think a lot of people are really nervous about the abilities that the land area will provide for without septic. So basically, I heard a lot of people saying we're going to turn into a city because, you know, there can be so much growth on parcel that isn't allowed now. So I think we need to figure out a way to balance the economic development in our commercial base and still keep, you know, maybe, you know, residential, have some restrictions on the land area that covered the septic, because I think that people are really worried about that type of build-out and what's going to happen like that. So I think we have to start having conversation about that.
If I can just add a little bit to that, one of the things that the town will need to do to qualify for 0% interest loans is to adopt what's known as land use controls. And what that is, is it's a plan where you manage through zoning and whatever means you choose to manage to the flows that you're predicting that are included in your comprehensive wastewater management plan. So we've been working with planning staff to look at additional allowances for some of your village centers areas, should you choose to do different zoning there. But other than that, residential areas, they would be limited to their current water use, and so you can't have the big high-rise hotel come in unless you've included that in your plan, so to speak, so.
But I'm not sure that was done in advance of our ask last time, and I think that that's one of the things that made people nervous. one of the things that made people nervous, was not having that in place. You know, I think we have to make sure that that kind of stuff is in place before we move on to the next phase. Other than that, I think, I think we have to keep moving forward. Hopefully, it will come in at less money, but I think the continued planning, there's a lot of questions still out there. It's early yet still in terms of what's going to happen, both in Barnstable and Dennis and Howard's. So I think we just have to keep moving along with our, with our own thing and, again, trying to keep the cost off the tax rolls to the greatest extent possible. Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thanks to the committee. Rich, thank you for that presentation. I see we have some members in the audience. Thank you for all the work that you're doing on this project or on this initiative. Very much appreciated. One thing I'm curious about is, is how much of the defined area Phase One might be in a designated opportunity zone? Do you, do you know that, Karen? Is there a way to go back to that slide?
I think the short answer is half.
Really?
Yeah.
Half of that?
Well, the opportunity zone runs from the Bass River up where Route 28 is, Rich. It actually starts, you know, north of there, and it goes all the way to Parker's River.
Okay.
Just before the, the bridge, like, the drive-in site is not in the opportunity zone. That's the boundary.
Okay.
And then it does include all of South Shore Drive, everything south of Route 28.
Okay.
And all along the river.
Yeah, because, I mentioned that because the federal agencies are now being told to request specific federal dollars in a number of grant programs specifically for opportunity zones. And obviously, some of the tax credits and some of the incentives in opportunity zones are somewhat robust. So there might be, again, this is being flushed out, but everything that I've read, you know, shows that we're going to see more money set aside by the Congress and the administration for the opportunity zone areas. They're all getting the message. We have yet to see any budget numbers, but I think that's a potential opportunity that we should certainly keep in the back of our minds as we talk about this. The other question that I have deals with the rental tax. I mean, I've seen some estimates of what the other towns are getting, not so much going into the fund, but also in what's being remitted to the towns. And I, I agree with Tracy. I think as we, and I know it's early, everybody's being told by the Department of Revenue to be cautious about estimating what those revenues are, but I would agree with Tracy. I think we may want to, as a matter of policy, earmark a chunk of those dollars for infrastructure, whether by, we have the option here as the town or through a home rule petition. But I think some of those dollars, it's appropriate to reinvest those monies in this area. So I would strongly support that, that suggestion by Tracy.
And there will also be, there'll also be grant opportunities off that fund, too.
As well, yeah. Now, we mentioned Phase One, we talked about $115 million number. If we were to do the regional treatment, let's say that all fell into place, the Dennis, Howard, Yarmouth Clean Water Partnership on the treatment plant, how much does that get knocked down? How much do we save on Phase One? Do we know? Does that number go down?
That's still being flushed out a little bit.
Okay.
And still a little bit to be determined on the agreement. But I would say, what's the, one interesting aspect of that is each community in that partnership realizes a, I think the number is 32% overall savings. Some realize a little bit more than savings than that, and Yarmouth doesn't realize as much savings. But also, the allocation of the savings differs. Some are saving more on the capital, and others are saving more on the operating cost. And so the operating cost is significant, because that's the one that keeps on occurring every year for the rest, as long as you're continuing a program. And so Yarmouth doesn't save as much on the capital, but is projected to be saving more on the operating. And so, once we have a final agreement, we'll be able to cost that out and provide the detail as to where we're saving our money.
That would be helpful. Thanks. Did you?
I wanted to follow up on your home rule petition comment, just because I think you're closing the warrant tonight. And so if that was, I don't know what your timing was that you were thinking of, but I don't know if we have something on there that would be a kind of placeholder for that.
I would recommend at this point, because it is more of an unknown than it is a known, that we do it by board policy. So when the revenue comes in, because it's going to be all one bucket, we'll be able to make some assumptions on a few things.
And you can always do it in the fall.
And we could always do it in the fall, so, I mean, yeah, no question. I would prefer to try to, my own philosophy, try to keep it locally controlled as opposed to, through legislation. Depending upon things go, if you home rule it and it gets stuck that way, it's very hard to change it, so.
Very true. Mike?
Can I just ask a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Couple more? Yeah, yeah. Well, what I'm particularly interested in is in the study that was done that involved the Donahue Institute. And one of the things that sort of struck me in the study is in the, sort of the do-nothing approach, where the cost of making improvements is largely left on the homeowner. Now, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, but it says almost $10,000. We're talking about if indeed the town of Yarmouth were to do nothing, it's conceivable that if DEP went forward to push on their regulations and a regulatory approach to this, it's conceivable that 9,680 homeowners in Yarmouth would be forced to upgrade their septic systems. Am I, am I reading that correctly?
That's the concern.
Yes. Okay. And I'm also, the other number that goes with it is that collectively, the cost for these roughly 10,000 homeowners, they would have to come up literally on their own with $193 million worth of funding, all right, in order to upgrade their septic systems. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a significant amount of money per homeowner that they would have to, on their own, come up with.
And I would add that, based on the information that we've looked, been looking at, and this is not new, this was also discussed back in 2016 when we revisited this plan, those septic systems or innovative alternative septic systems did not reach the required level of nitrogen remediation. So we'd still have to do something to meet the requirement, the amount of nitrogen we need to remove otherwise.
So it's, so they're not completely off the hook. They may have to actually spend more money to make more upgrades above and beyond what's already estimated here. I also see another number that Yarmouth homeowners, again, we're talking 9,600 people, we're talking about their, their annual O&M testing evaluation costs would be over $26 million.
That's right.
That's, I'm reading that correctly as well.
Yes.
And compare that to, and this is why I mentioned the discussion about, we all have savings in different areas. You'd much, you know, all things being equal, you'd rather have annual savings in your O&M versus a one-time savings in capital. And so I think in the plan, Dave, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our O&M on a centralized treatment plant was about $10 million per year.
Right.
As a community.
Excuse me, Mark, where are you seeing that?
I'm looking at page 25 in the economic study that was done by UMass.
I mean, there's only 11,000 households in Yarmouth. And, you know, I'm astounded by the assertion that 80% to 90% of the households would have to upgrade on their own, but.
I believe there's more than that, but I can get the exact numbers. We'll go through the assessor's office and get you the detail on that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, this is an economic study done by UMass, and this is a pretty well-respected institute. I'm just quoting, that's why I wanted, I wanted to look at this, because it's a fairly significant economic impact to residents in Yarmouth.
There's summary statistics on the fifth slide that's in your packet, Norm, that I think Mark has, has got the details on.
Yeah, and all they've done is they've looked at the number of homes in those different watersheds that you see on the board over to my right. And looking at the DEP letter issued back in February 2017 that said if a town doesn't move forward, they will declare those nitrogen-sensitive areas, and each homeowner would be required to implement their own nitrogen removal system. So those costs that the Donahue Institute took, I believe, came right out of the Cape Cod Commission guidebooks for cost for the capital and O&M for an innovative alternative system, which only removes about 50% nitrogen. So that's what Rich was referring to, and you see the percent removals over there, 80, 96, and 60%. That doesn't get you there.
Right.
So the town would still have to do something additional to supplement that, as well as those homeowners paying those costs.
Okay, that's what I just, and I'm glad you pointed it out on the map. So the areas, those three watershed areas in the top map that you're showcasing right there, those would be principally the homeowners and the residents that would be affected, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because my understanding is, given all the work that the Cape Cod Commission has done in terms of modeling the area, identifying the nitrogen-sensitive area, that it's not going to take a great leap if DEP had to take this move and establish this kind of enforcement order here in Yarmouth. It's not going to be that difficult to do, because all the science has now been done, all the modeling has been done. So identifying the geographic area that would be affected and impacted by this order is pretty much a no-brainer. The work's been done. So they, they could, because when we talk about litigation, the thing that I'm concerned about is, we've seen some of these high-profile cases of individual residences where the CLF has been focusing. But I think what's been, what's been forgotten is the potential legal issues associated with this. It would be potentially, it could be conceivably a court action against DEP citing a community for not taking action, and then they in turn could force them to accelerate. I'm just trying to anticipate the legal exposure that we might be facing with respect to the do-nothing approach, because literally, they could, I mean, the mechanisms are there to do it, so I would assume the action would be against the state. Would that progressively be it, Dave?
Well, Title V is the subsurface standard now, the code in Massachusetts, and per that letter from DEP, they said they're in the process, which I know they've formed the committees already, to revise Title V to incorporate those nitrogen-sensitive areas, that requirement.
Okay. My final question, Mr. Chairman, is just, I think the outreach, outreach, outreach bullet is terrific, and I think, just following up on what Tracy had said, I think it would be helpful going into town meeting to sort of think through the budget for the outreach, what kind of work has to be done, and I think that's something that I'd certainly be interested in seeing, given how important it is. So thank you.
In terms of a private solution to this, and I'm certainly not advocating that, but with the upgrades to, for alternative systems, innovative and alternative technology, would those systems be modifying existing systems, or would they be necessarily entailing complete replacements of what's there now?
Probably replacement.
Essentially, it would be a complete replacement. You'd actually be putting a small biological treatment plant at each property owner.
Okay. And obviously, the design isn't that effective if we're talking about nitrogen removal of only 50%, even with the innovative and alternative technology. Is that correct?
The biggest difficulty comes about from, you have to feed those systems constantly, on a constant basis. And as you know, many of the homeowners here, you know, it's seasonal homes or, you know, sporadic use. So that's been the key in the test centers that have been run by George Hoyfelder up at Otis Air National Guard for the Barnstable County Health System. So, but even feeding them on a constant basis, they're showing 40 plus or minus, I mean, excuse me, 50 plus or minus percent removals for nitrogen.
Without that constant efficiency flow levels, they're probably, what, doing 20%, 30%?
Correct. A typical Title V system may get you 10, maybe 15%, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I find it interesting that included in Phase One is the South Shore Drive area. Have you had any outreach or any input from the business owners in that community? I think there's tremendous potential there, and I'm not at all critical of that. I think it's a good idea, but have you, what brought you to that point, that you included that area within the first phase?
Part of the reason, we had information that we've asked more questions of DEP, or I've asked, have DEPs asked what kind of problems they have, because these are large systems, a lot of them need DEP approval, and apparently, some of them are in failure or close to it and are going to need substantial upgrades in the near future. So we thought, again, under, well, number one, environmentally, it's smart, but from an economic development standpoint, we think that's a, a large area that could be taken advantage of.
And just the other point I wanted to make is, Dave, Dave addressed it already, really, and it was a concern that I had, and I think Tracy voiced it as well, is that the land use controls that are required to get the interest-free loans, I'm happy to hear that that's a requirement, because I had the same concern with, with soaring is going to create the potential for more dense development. And while you want to be efficient and while you want to perhaps develop the community centers, village centers that we've talked about in the past, you want to make sure that because of that capability, you don't lose the character of what's important to all of us and the open space and the, the small-town feel of Yarmouth. So hopefully, only in-use controls will, that, that phase of it will, will provide a balance between the development and the preservation of the character of the community.
One of the conversations that's been had in the past is, is even if you don't have Title V, you're on sewer, you can adopt the same density as if you had Title V, so you could do a 10,000-square-foot land per bedroom or something like that, unless you decided you wanted to encourage, say, an affordable accessory unit or a family accessory unit in certain areas, that you could put a little bit more density where the town wants it.
Or in zones of contribution. If there's soaring in there, that will eliminate that environmental concern and perhaps allow that extra bedroom or whatever.
And the other thing to consider, when we talk about these individual systems, especially in a lot of the areas that are, you know, shaded in here in the phases, is how wet they are, and they would require raised systems. And think about the, you know, detriment to the loss of the trees and the value of the property when, you know, a small lot, most of your property is taken up by a septic system.
Which are very expensive, too, and aesthetically unpleasing, that's for sure.
What I was going to add was, in my opinion, the best land use controls would be through zoning for this particular matter, but I do know there are some communities that have controlled it through their sewer regulations. And so that's kind of what Kurt's referring to there as well. If you can only build to a certain capacity based upon Title V, you could do some of that control through sewer use regulations that this board would control as the sewer commissioners.
That's a great point, Jeff. Thank you. Those are my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've got a couple of other questions. Just to follow up on Tracy's question about the planning money, is, is that going to be credited as part of the costs that's been incurred by communities already in terms of what the total cost of the, the initial build-out, you know, capital build-out is concerned? What if we've got one community that's put in half a million dollars and other communities that put in $50,000 into planning?
I assume you're referring to the DHY discussions and that analysis?
Right.
That's all been paid for through the state grant that the three towns received last January. And that grant, that's the grant that.
I'm talking about what we're putting in now at town meeting.
Well, each town is funding what they believe they need to, for either outreach or what have you, if the town meeting vote is not this May, whenever it may be in that community.
So we have a.
So we'll have better information for you when we talk about the articles for town meeting with regards to this particular one for wastewater with a more detailed budget. But there is a component that we need to update our individual wastewater master plan, as do the other communities as well, and there's a component associated with that, and the outreach, of course. But we'll have a better budget for you when we talk about that specific article.
Okay, all right. I guess I had a question as well regarding, you know, one of the reasons the, the vote failed the last time around is that I think a lot of people felt they were being forced to pay for somebody else's system. And that, and, and here, we're focusing on Route 28. And I don't see where a lot of people are going to see the benefit of that, other than, you know, the, the overall projections, and who knows whether all that comes, comes true or not. And I guess one of the basic principles you've got here that, I mean, I have any discussion of these principles, is everyone should participate in the solution. And, and I, I question whether that's going to fly at town meeting. You know, I think there's, there's. I think there's, there's got to be a real understanding in the community of what their benefit is going to be if, you know, you're going to get an awful lot of people out there that are just going to say, "I'm never going to have a system." What is the benefit going to be to me? Put it in my pocket. If all we talk about is, well, gee, economic growth, this, and be very general about it, I don't think we're going to get those people's support. Is that when the same group of people has voted it down last time, are still going to look at it cynically and say, "You know what? You haven't convinced me yet. Because you're saying to me it's going to cost me money when I'm not getting any benefit."
Well, I think the...
How do we, how do we deal with that?
I think a few things there. So each of those panel might have some comment, too. But parsing one of those is, we've got to start somewhere if we're going to achieve the, if we agree that there's a nitrogen-removable removal goal, you've got to start somewhere. So the Route 28, the reason we changed that design a couple of years ago, and are contemplating it now, is it addresses the nitrogen removal in three watersheds. So everyone in that watershed is experiencing some degree of removal, and getting some degree of remediation. It also sets the stage for every phase that follows, regardless of which area of town you want to focus. I mean, I think, you know, the early phases are, you know, we're reasonably certain that that's probably how they'd go. But, you know, experience in other town has shown that once the sewers are available, that there is a big demand for people to want to hook up to those sewers. So perhaps the later phasing isn't as we're contemplating it right now, of the timeline or the location. But by doing a Phase One that runs all Route 28, we've positioned ourselves to take advantage to that circumstance, if it were to arise. I guess the other comment I'd make is, I think there's a feeling on the committee that everybody benefits from having clean water and a clean environment. And so, everybody does benefit from the solution. It's just a matter of degree. Perhaps you're asking each of them to pay, which is why in our Phase One cost principles that we're looking at, we're looking at mechanisms that everybody pays some, those that use more are paying more, and perhaps a betterment program.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would just add to that, if you don't mind?
Not until I'm finished.
Okay.
I go back to the statement that was made a couple of years ago to our community, that we would not be having a general tax rate cost. And we said that to the community. We said we were going to find other ways of doing it, so that there was not a general tax rate cost to the entire community. Now, it seems, we're saying something different. And I think people are going to see that. And I think that's a real issue.
Well, I guess I would say, what I put down in the presentation here was, what the cost would be on the tax rate if it was fully adopted as such. So the task of the committee to come back is to provide an update at some point in the future with a cost recovery plan for this Phase One, and maybe an outlook for the future to some extent. And let's see what that looks like. We need to have a little bit more shakeout on the short-term rental tax to see what that might mean for us. We need to explore the water infrastructure fund and get that in place, if that's going to be a mechanism. We need to align it up like we did last time, with all the costs as a graph, superimposed with all the funding sources, to see where we land.
Okay. Well, I think some thought needs to be given to how the funding is isolated to the areas of benefit, that, so that we don't have 70 percent of the community saying, "Not on my dime." Because, you know, this is the same group of people that voted last time. But, you know, it's, I guess I would be careful about linking this back to previous plans. I think, again, you know, the reaction is going to be, "So what's changed? We voted it down last time. What's changed?" And I think we've got to answer those questions, because it was a substantial majority of the town that voted.
Well, I guess I, one of my, I don't know, the technologies available to remediate the nitrogen have not changed all that much. And so, it's a reemphasis on, what was the approach that seemed to be the most cost-effective solution? So perhaps you're right, that that hasn't changed too much. One of the, one of the, one piece of information I'd like to have, is one thing I know has changed, is the cost of this has gone up significantly. So from 2011 to 2021, whenever we do our planning till, to me, anyway, and I would like to relate to the public and to the committee here, the board here, is, what has it cost us to not have done this in 2011, or in 2016? So, you know, perhaps you're right, that the solution hasn't changed much, but the cost structure has. But also, so has our ability to implement other cost recovery methods. So we've got to put all that together.
You know, back in 2011, we didn't have the Bass River information either. So there's a whole bunch of people who thought, "Well, I'm not benefiting it." And that's not true. Everybody benefits from whatever we do in this program. But if you look at the map, you know, Bass River, again, wasn't included. There's a lot of people in there that, through the phases, are now going to be connected to a source system that probably didn't think they would be. So...
I understand. But even at that, Kurt, you know, and I understand where you're going with it. You know, the, at what point in time will they see that benefit? When will they be hooked up to the system? You know, there's a lot of details there in terms of, okay, well, what's it going to, how much is it going to cost me before I have an opportunity to hook up? And, you know, it's easy to run those numbers.
It'll be less today than it will be tomorrow.
Well, you can't build a pipe in the ground without a plant, either. So, I mean, you've got to start somewhere. So I understand the point. But, you know, Phase One is about getting started, and setting ourselves up for the future. So if we did a pipe from Barnstable to Parker's River, that doesn't do any good for anybody in Bass River, you know, by doing it the whole length of the 28, we're setting ourselves up to be able to do the phasing. Like I said, we've got eight phases contemplated. But I don't know what it will be, but I know it won't be exactly the way it's planned out today, you know, 10 years from now. And so, you got to build, you know, if we were to do this program, or a similar program, we need to start somewhere with a first phase, and we need a plant.
You know, part of a discussion at the committee level, too, was, I envisioned Phases One, not necessarily One, Two, Three, Four, Three, but One A, One B. I think we're going to find neighborhoods that are willing to pay the money and want to tie in sooner, rather than later. So having this, the way we plan it, it's set up for at least four phases anyways, the plant is, to start with. So we could accelerate some of these things if the funding is there, which, again, would save money in the long term also.
I'm not suggesting that the plan is a poor one. What I'm suggesting is that reversing ourselves on what we said two years ago is not a good idea.
We're not saying that.
Okay. Well, the first principle is, everybody should participate in the solution.
Well, if you have a wastewater infrastructure fund, everybody's participating.
I'm talking about in the general tax rate.
Whether you pay it in that fund or a general tax rate, it's the same people's pockets.
Well, if they see it in their tax bill, and we've said that they won't, that's a whole different matter.
You know, obviously, there's going to be a huge public outreach campaign to educate people to the issues, why you're doing this, what's involved, what the costs are. But it shouldn't be forgotten that this program also is protecting your drinking water supplies, which everyone in town is using. It's protecting your freshwater ponds, which several people in town use. So yes, the main focus is on the nitrogen and your saltwater estuaries. But you're getting economic benefits, drinking water benefits, and freshwater pond benefits, that I think most people in town do benefit from. So, and that has got to be part of the education program.
Okay. Okay. All right. What are we looking for at this point, from our board?
So I don't know that we had a specific ask, other than the update, and to get some feedback as to what you thought was important to begin our outreach. We did not want to get ahead of the game here by doing a whole bunch of outreach on something that you hadn't had in front of you and seen. And so, Kurt, you know, if you chime in, if you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea was to start developing our materials based on the information we have in front of us today, and flesh it out. And as we get the details, to develop those educational materials, so that we can get them out to the public. But some of your questions were excellent, and we'll make sure that we include and address those.
Okay. Well, thanks for, thank you for the presentation, and we'll look forward to the future.
I guess the next thing is probably, when should we come back and speak again? And figure out, obviously, from last experience, we need the board's support to get this done.
Right.
Because that was part of the failure last time. So we need to figure out how to get all of you on board.
I think we need to understand what the impact is, you know, and be able to answer people's questions about, what is the impact on me going to be?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Police Department and Fire Department Budget Review.
Dan, do we have something other than, okay?
It was a budget detail for the police. It was in the budget book. I noticed nobody had brought it with them, so we're going to print it out for you.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Doing well, thanks. How about you?
Excellent, excellent.
Great time of year, right?
I love it. Nothing better I'd want to be doing right now.
Well, welcome. We're looking forward to a very stimulating discussion.
All right.
I guess what I could say, generally speaking, the expense items, line items for the police were level-funded. That was the directive. And the salary items, line items are related to the contractual obligations that we have, from this recent settlement that we had with both unions, and different longevity-related pay. So the standard pay. There isn't anything specifically different in the police budget, although the chief put a memo together. And two areas that I'd like to highlight is, they did ask for some additional IT support. Obviously, it's a big area. Rich had done a nice job last meeting, talking about all the different things that IT's doing. Part of that strategy is to be able to provide project-based resources. The police have a homegrown talent that they have. They have a lot of demand on technology. The other one, as you know, is with the retirement of Officer Magnuson, there was a savings there that we had in that position, and we were able to repurpose that, and to provide support to address the evidence and licensing position situation. And Officer Magnuson is on the job, part-time now, and we experienced savings in his salary, was used to pay for that activity. And then, as it relates to overtime, we had shared some information about what's driving overtime. Though it has stayed level for a number of years, and it hasn't been adjusted for salary inflation and whatnot, we believe with the introduction of that LOD stabilization article, that the most significant drivers of long-term LOD salary encarment will be addressed through that fund. So when somebody goes out on LOD, and they are out for an extensive period of time, we can collect their salary off of that fund, so it takes pressure off the general appropriation of salary accounts. We will present at a later date a policy for the board to review and adopt that, under what circumstance can that fund be tapped? Short of the 4-2 schedule situation adoption, that's one of the areas that would have like maybe $160,000 of projected savings. But we couldn't get there. We have two different shift schedules, and it does cause a, it's a costly business model, there's no question. But I am confident that, like, since even before my arrival, and the two years I've been here, as needs arise, we will address that with YPD staff, and provide the funding we need to provide them, to make sure that we have the most effective unit to put out on the streets. One of the issues, as you know, is there's no easily identifiable excess levy capacity around. So if we were to put more money into the budget here for them, somebody else would have to give it. Who's that going to be? Because everybody's kind of lean. And we were always mindful, since at least I've arrived in town, and probably even before that, the big gorilla in the room is the school budget. So we're always mindful of how much extra money might be available, or needed to be, to address that. Because we don't want to be in a position where we have to have a decision that something over a million dollars would be for a prop two-and-a-half override vote. So under the constraints that we're operating in, we've put together a budget that continues the mission. I know there's, the chief has some desires and asks. But we are under some very difficult operating constraints.
Thank you.
I've asked Chris to get you the budget detail.
But there's really no significant change?
No.
There is a cover page that the Police Department initially submitted with the budget that details the significant changes in this year's budget, and that package is called "Please Send Budget Over."
So, Dan, did you say, as opposed, I guess in regards to his memo about the overtime?
Yeah.
Did that line item get increased at the same rate?
No, the overtime, the chief did put in a request to increase, I think, $50,000, the overtime line item. But I don't have that money available. So we flatlined it to the same level it was, I believe, as last year. With the idea, though, with the analysis that we did on the injured-on-duty situation, that, obviously, we have to be very mindful of that. But these most extensive cases, if he, if he has a year, next year, like was this year, we would have at least kind of a safety valve we could get to, under the proper policy. The other thing, I think, that the chief, it should be pointed out, when he knew that there was an excess amount of leaves, he had asked for permission to modify on an interim basis the hiring policy that allows us to hire, like, laterally from other departments. I think the idea that being able to do that, and getting a fully-trained, fully-academy-trained officer onboard rather rapidly, will pay great dividends for us. It's probably something I've talked to the chief about getting in front of the board, as, to give him that ability to do that continuously into the future, and incorporate into our normal hiring standard. But he has documented, and I know, I'm sure it's been before I was here as well, but since I've been here, how long it takes when there is a vacancy due to retirement, to get somebody up to speed, 13 weeks or there at the academy and whatnot. And all of that typically gets backfilled by somebody on overtime. So there's a lot of drivers on overtime. And, you know, he's been really good about working with the administration to give us the heads-up. But the only significant relief I could give him was approval of the interim policy in the LOD relief article. And we hope we can stay for the next couple of years on top of the situation. But at some point, the pressures might, until we get a resolve on the shift schedule. I do believe, as time goes off into the future, and the legacy five-and-three shift officers retire, you will see some economy of efficiency occur, because everybody's... and three officers are there and, you know, over the next six to eight years, we'll be almost out of that problem with that shift.
Okay. Okay. So what is, so the memo says $25,000 added for evidence and licensing position?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm trying to find that in the headcounts.
It's not in the headcount. It's on page, the very first page of their budget, three out of 18 at the top.
So it's in the dollars?
Yeah, right there where that.
No, I see the dollars. I was trying to see it in the positions list.
It's on the position though.
So is that?
I see it's under, I believe it, you're going to find it under police evidence and license line.
Yeah, but it's not in new position.
It's not. It's.
It's on the part-time wages.
Okay. So that's not a full-time person?
No.
The $25,000, it's not?
No.
What is the, what is the $25,000 for then?
That is for a part-time person to work in records.
Okay. So where is that, that person in the personnel summary?
I think the personnel summary only reflects full-time personnel. We have a number of part-time people such as our matrons, our reserve officers, and I think that, and we have two part-time people such as the IT person, part-time also.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board?
I just have questions about the memo specifically. I don't know if he's going to go over it or if you want to just.
Whichever way is fine.
Best asked questions.
Well, I mean, it talks about your operating inefficiencies, mandatory training, equipment, IT. So you're still short with IT even after?
The IT is in expenses. Our expense budget, if you take a look at it, is modesty. The only increase in it this year was a contractual increase of about $6,000, which will be for uniforms for new hires.
I was just going to ask about your overall uniform situation for next year. That's been corrected. Are you still short?
The, for.
Dress uniforms.
For dress, that is corrected. Town Mr. Kapnek took care of it. I'm not sure exactly how you did it, but it all worked out.
Support of the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we had the discussion about that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything that got left off.
No. And trust me, we're very grateful for that. That's a, that's a big deal.
So can you just talk about the inefficiencies that you're still left with, that something that is?
Yeah.
We need to be aware of for this particular year?
What has happened with the overtime costs is we've given COLAs and that hasn't reflected in the increase in overtime. So as a result, in effect, what we're doing is reducing our ability to put personnel out where they're needed, whether it's on patrol, investigations, PAC, whatever it is. It's reduced and it's about the number of about 10%. So our $660,000 overtime budget, in effect, has reduced about 10% in the last four years. So we can't make that up. So it just strains our ability to do things. And unless we correct that, it'll, it'll keep dipping down and we'll end up having to make other decisions on, on what we do. It's not a good one because I do not want our officers going out there with not the right amount of staffing. And they need the ability to do investigations and we need to be out there doing our community policing efforts. We need to be out there doing our proactive anti-crime methods and it's proven to do the things we thought it would do. I mean, I remember some time ago being here and Selectment Tully asked, how are we going to measure that we are a goal of being the safest community in the region? That's a great question. Because it was tough to figure out, but what we can tell you is that we're showing results because what you've allowed us to do is paying off. And I don't know if you saw the post that we put out, but we've reduced burglaries to record lows for the fifth straight year, which is remarkable. And that's something that citizens enjoy. It's not perfect, but we went from over 300 house breaks back in 2010 to somewhere around 50 this year. It's a lot of work, a lot of cooperation with our communities, technology being in play, alarms, all types of things. But I know our efforts and the efforts of the men and women of the armed police department and the cooperation with our citizenry have paid a big part of that. We want to continue doing that, but eventually it's going to be more difficult to do that when we can't put people on the road. We haven't reached that critical point yet, but when you start looking at 10% reductions in overtime, that's in four years, what's, what's the next four years going to look like? So we need to keep, keep up on that. The, the expense budget, I think across the board in the town is like in, it basically flatlined. And anybody running a business, running a division or running your home knows that those expenses in just about every aspect go up. And even at us, we, we have a built-in 5% increase in just our CAD system every year. And so it's, you know, we get the same amount, but, you know, these other increases, they keep sucking away, chipping away from all the other things and it's crisis management and spending. We had a cleanup of a homeless person that died in the town. It wasn't on town property, it was a piece of property, but we couldn't leave what was left there. So that cost $800 to clean that up. That comes out of our budget somewhere. We talked, tried to get an insurance payment, but it, it really doesn't, but we got to take it out of what we already have. It's nothing we planned for. We got, had our HVAC system tested and checked out, which is, and fixed and, which is typical. But we were a little shocked when we got a $20,000 bill. Okay? You know, so we have a $200,000 expense budget and that's, I don't know, I'm not good in math, but that's roughly 10%, you know? But again.
Didn't you hear in the bill to me though?
Yeah. That's what we always do. But occasionally, some of those get bounced back. And, you know, when we have other issues, we tend not to, well, we'll have to wait or we'll just do it and we'll figure it out when we, we get there. We're always moving pieces around because it's not like we have this dream budget and we can say at the end of the year, hey, we didn't spend this, so here's, here's $25,000 back. We already know from, from the get-go that there's not enough there. We'll figure, we just got to hook it by crook, get through to the end. And best example, we talked about this last year.
That's a bad analogy.
Especially in our line of work.
But, you know, uniforms, when we hire new people, you know, we spend, I don't know, $4,000 for a new hire uniform when they come on. This year's a big year. We're hiring a bunch of people because we've had people leave for a lot of reasons. Retirements and some people just had to leave. So five officers this year, $4,000 each per uniform allotment, $20,000. It's, that's not fully accounted for in our budget. Again, that's another 10% just to pay for them. We don't, we can't predict how many every year we're going to have. So that's just another piece. We try to make things match. It's like a, we try to make it work.
So I noticed one of the things before we had done, and I see it's in your, your budget is the training. We had for quite a period of time, a shortage of training and we had given that through free cash grants, which got incorporated into your budget, but it seems your training, your expenses for training for both patrol supervisors and mandatory training are still insufficient?
Right. Well, they keep adding training to us. So required training, for example, TASA training, which was, we could do fairly easily do a shift training. We can't do that anymore. Four hours of mandatory training every year to do it. And, you know, we can try to do it on shift and this and that, but it doesn't, it doesn't work. You can't make it all work to get the instructors there to fire off the cartridges, et cetera. So that's just an addition, that's an example of an addition that, that we have to do.
Is that every year?
Every year now.
Every year?
Every year we got to add. So you, you parlay that onto what we've already had for training and then a 10% basically reduction in the overtime for it. It, it really crunches things.
Do you know what your total actual required man-hour training is for everything together and what your budget is?
Well, that, that's a difficult question to answer because they're all different, depending on when you come in, what position you, for matter of fact, for example, if you get promoted and you're a sexual assault investigator, there's a mandatory two-week training on that. You get promoted, there's a mandatory three weeks of training on that. When you.
I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we've talked a lot about with the Fire Department, their overtime is greatly because the loss of people. I mean, have we done an analysis in the Police Department to see if we brought on two more personnel, if we would be able to reduce that overtime and keep a level fund with having more personnel?
We, we've done that several times, especially over the past 10 years. We've done that a lot and it, it's almost, it's almost neutral and in some ways overtime is a better advantage because you don't pay the benefits.
Right.
When you add in 20% in benefits or whatever the, the number is, you don't pay that. And so we have looked at that. I think in the most recent studies we've done have all said that. We had the Collins Center come in and do that. They were looking at that and it just doesn't really pan out.
It just seems like when you put it all together, there's probably several weeks or at least probably two weeks at least, if you just took them off the street to do training, that, that's a, that's a lot. It's a lot of training. I mean, and we have unbelievable police officers and they're very well-trained, which we're fortunate about, but it's, it's at a cost.
Well, unfortunately, we don't train enough.
Yeah.
You know, we, especially firearms, we, we shoot twice a year. That's why we're, we're pushing hard to get our training facility done because we can, when we get the assets that we need to do that, we can change the model of how we train and get more efficient, not only get them more frequently, but get them to do it better. Recently, with the help of the foundation and the town, we just about ready to open up the interactive range in the, in the basement. It's beautiful and it's going to be effective. It's going to make their skills better, confidence, a lot of different things. That's, that's one piece of it, but we got more to do. We have a vision and a plan. We have motivated people on the outside willing to help us get to our goal. We've, the foundation has done amazing things and unfortunately, you know, the, their ability to raise funds has, was promulgated by what happened in April, but it has been an amazing amount of funds they've raised for, for us to do what we, we have a vision to do.
Is there anything part of your budget that is provided for through free cash grants this year?
I don't think there's anything in free cash grants.
Is there anything that?
Can we allow someone else to ask some questions? Eric?
I conceded my time to Tracy. She's on her roll. Go ahead.
I'm just curious, I'll just ask one last question if you don't mind. Thank you, Eric. If there was anything in, that you foresee that would be a one-time fund that would actually help in operational overtime savings in the future?
Overtime savings, that's a.
Any type of savings?
Geez, that's a, that's a tough question, to get funds to do savings. It only, most, the, the better way maybe, it wants to be asked this way, is how can we enhance or get to our goal of what we need? Because when we look at our supervisory staffing, we're not, we know we're not doing what we're supposed to do and it's, sometimes it's uncomfortable as the chief to be able to have their request. When you hear your officer say, we need another sergeant out here doing this. I can't do this by myself. I can't manage the station and dispatch and booking prisoners and, you know, someone at the hospital while the officers are out there on the road doing things. They can't supervise things because they're making, they worry that they make mistakes and they're not going to be on top of it. And we're not covering that enough. So that, that's kind of a black hole and it's expensive. And it does go back to the shift because most of the sergeants are on that five and three shift. So they, in essence, they're getting, you know, three more weeks off a year on that schedule as someone with a four and two schedule. So when you think about that, think about that, that, that hamset stretches out your personnel. But it's what was put in the contract in 1974, when things were different, when growth was different, where we, we had part-timers working in place of people. It's not 1974 anymore. So.
All right, Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
You're good. Just, you know, looking on an overall basis, have you made any comparisons or in connection with the, the study that was done just recently of the overall expense level of the department relative to population of a community or to their total budget for, for a year? I mean, have you done, done those kinds of comparisons?
We have. We've gone, we've done this a number of times over the past few. As a matter of fact, we had the question asked to compare five communities, which I've gotten all the data. There's a reason for the delay, but it's all completed. But it's so hard to compare one community to the next. It really is. I mean, even when I look at this list that was, was on here, I look at Falmouth, for example, fairly similar. However, you know, there's so many things in between that you can't get just from data. You really have to look at it. For example, our budget includes dispatch, includes eight dispatches. This doesn't. So it's hard to, and the overtime associated with it. So it's really, it's, it's hard. But we have, what our best measure has been, how do we compare with our neighbors? How do we compare with Dennis and Bonstable? It's a pretty good measure and the times we have looked at it, it's right where we expect. We're right between them. We're right between them as far as staffing, as far as expenses and as far as overtime. We're right, we're right about where we're at, so we feel pretty comfortable. And, you know, here's another thing to do. We, we track so many things, so many things. You may not be able to see this, but this is a breakdown on a pie of our budget of where everything is.
A little slits there.
Yeah, there's a lot of little slits. So when you look at them, as a matter of fact, they, they ran out of colors. You can't tell one color from the next. They're just like a little off. But it is so precise on what we spend it on. We can tell you every penny where we spend it. And, you know, when we look at, hey, you know, we do these exercises from time to time, where would we cut? How could we cut? It's hard to, hard to decide. It really is. I mean, you, you look at court, we can't cut court. All right? We can't cut supervision when we, we. It's a pretty good measure and the times we have looked at it, it's right where we expect. We're right between them.
Mm-hmm.
We're right between them as far as staffing, as far as expenses and as far as overtime. We're right, we're right about where we're at, so we feel pretty comfortable. And, you know, here's another thing to do. We, we track so many things, so many things. You may not be able to see this, but this is a breakdown on a pie of our budget of where everything is-
A little slits there.
Yeah, there's a lot of little slits. So, when you look at them, as a matter of fact, they, they ran out of colors. You can't tell one color from the next. They're just, you know, a little off. But it is so precise on what we spend it on. We can tell you every penny where we spend it. And, you know, when we look at, hey, you know, we do these exercises from time to time. Where would we cut? How could we cut? It's, it's hard to, hard to decide. It really is. I mean, you, you look at court, we can't cut court, all right? We can't cut supervision when we, we have to have a sergeant. You can't cut our staff, we gotta have people out there. We have prisoner watch, we have to have somebody in there by law to watch them every half hour and, and check them. Investigations, you get called out for a sexual assault or robbery or something, someone's gotta come out and do it. Everything is in here. So, we, we pay a lot of attention to it. We get a weekly breakdown of every penny we spent. The deputy here, I know he's silent right at the moment, but he goes over every expenditure, you know?
I'm ready.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the chief raises a good point. One of the items on 2019's desire list here was to calculate the cost that we spend associated with lockup expenses. Put that dollar value down to paper, look to some other communities to see what they're spending. Use the model out of Hampton County that the legislative delegation in Hampton County put a outside legislation piece in the budget and built a facility for the sheriff. And the sheriff goes around and collects these lockup suspects. Why should every town be in the business at great expense having to worry about a lockup situation when you've got a corrections entity called the sheriff's department that's specially designed and trained to do that? So, that's one of those things. And then when we talk about transporting, it's incredibly, most people don't realize, juvenile transports, two officers now?
Two officers and-
Two officers, the juvenile transport to go to court.
They're up to Brockton.
Yeah.
And then not only do we bring them up, we gotta pick them up and bring them back.
So, there are a lot of these things that if we can better define the cost to us, work with the legislative delegation to replicate the model in Hampton County. I did speak to a couple of folks in the local law enforcement community back there. They have said nothing but high praise for the sheriff's effort out there. Sure, it was a big lift and it took some effort, but if you look at what the conversation is here tonight, you know, do we really want our police officers having to worry about these types of things when you've got right down the road a sheriff's entity that's specially trained to do, do this kind of activity? So, so I think there are some issues that we've identified that they are more strategic, larger issues, but they could have a pretty good impact, but it's gonna take some time to build some grassroots support for it.
Are there police forces around us that are on a different schedule?
Yeah, that's a great point. The chief mentioned Barnstable and Dennis. And the other ones on this list, they're all on that four and two. That's a real game changer.
Mm-hmm.
So, when we're comparing budgets, it's not the same when they're on a different schedule. The four and two means more people come to work.
So, if we lose an officer to Barnstable or Dennis, they're gonna be working more days a year, is what you're saying?
Yeah. They do. And, and, you know, we've listened to our officers and of course, they don't wanna lose the five and three, but that's, that's going, so we, the deal was made that, but through attrition, those that have it wouldn't lose it as, with, of 2010. And then the newer people are coming in, they work, they have five days less work than someone on a four and two schedule. So, some of that is looked at as, maybe that's a, a good attractive thing for, to attract people from another department. For example, Dan mentioned the methodology change in, in going after people who want to transfer to us. We just did that. We got three viable candidates who are working other departments. They are gonna be coming to us. The conditional off-employments will be coming through over the next few weeks to get them up and running. The advantage to us is we get a fully-trained veteran officer that doesn't have to go through 22 weeks of field training. And that's all salary that, when you do that. So, it's like a, and then backfill replacement. When you, you, you think of when they're not on the shift, it increases your overtime costs. So, it's like a $40,000 to $60,000 decision to hire someone that's already trained as opposed to getting a recruit. Now, the pool is now considered a puddle in law enforcement because there are not a lot of people that wanna be police officers. And it's gotten to a critical phase. As a matter of fact, Sandwich, Bourne, some of these civil service departments, they've exhausted the, the current lists. There's nobody to hire even if they wanted to. The next exam isn't until March with the results not coming out until October. And then they have to go through their process and hopefully get them, probably, they don't have an academy and they have to find an academy in there. So, they're looking at 2022 before they see an officer on the road with the three, both of them have three, Bourne and Sandwich have three positions open right now. 2022 by the time they get somebody.
Yeah. Well, there, there are things in this society that are affecting them. I think you're, you're aware of that at this stage and then-
Yes, sir.
It'll turn around at some point, we hope.
Yeah. Economy's doing very well that they don't have to work nights and weekends and holidays and birthdays and all that stuff for their kids, so it's different.
Kind of getting back to the, the point that Tracy was making in terms of the amount of time we have to spend in training and that we need in training. I mean, thinking about the 5-3 versus the, or the 5-3-2 versus the 4-2 schedule, I mean, if, if we were able to move to that 4-2, it would essentially mean that we'd have training covered in terms of the additional time that would be in, in each officer's schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's significant.
Yeah.
Well, gentlemen, you, you know you have our confidence. I think we all understand we have an excellent department and we'd love to grill you at least annually on your budget.
I can't, I love it.
But, but that's with, with the background that you have our complete support.
We know that.
Second pose, getting back to your question, what could something be done? We could use an infusion of some funding to pay for some of our increases that are not included in our budget. We did it a few years ago with ammunition, which helped a lot. We're running into that same thing. You know, if we had another $50,000 in expenses to help us, you know, bridge the gap, that would be, that would be great.
I think we'll keep that in mind as we get through the budget process. You're one of the, the first major departments to come in and talk to us and, and we haven't really had a full-out discussion of where our free cash is going and, and you know what the big, the big bear waiting out there for us is, so...
Hey, it's, it's kinda like the Patriots in the Super Bowl, it's every year, you know?
That's right. That's right. So, we, we'll, we'll keep that in mind and see if, you know, we can, we can fulfill that, so, thanks again for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing well tonight and yourself. We're running a little late. We apologize.
No problem.
Sometimes things get out of our control.
It's understandable. We're very patient.
Well...
We're used to it, so, not a problem.
Well, you know, if you're way down in the agenda, you know, you gotta have some waiting time.
Not a problem.
Generally, so, welcome again and gonna let you talk about your needs and, and where, where the budget is for this coming year.
Okay.
And fill the board in, so...
Basically, it's very similar to the police department. We had step increases and contractual agreements for our increases. The one difference was the addition of the four new paramedic positions that were added to the budget, which is gonna be a huge help to us going forward. And we were successful again in getting the SAFER grant, so that'll offset their costs. So, the first two years, 75% of theirs for paramedic positions will be covered by that SAFER grant, so the town will have to be on the hook for the 25%. And then 35% the third year, so the town will assume the 65%. The fourth year will assume the full liability. So, that was a great help to get that SAFER grant and I wanna commend Deputy Chief Sawyer for that and he did a lot of work on that.
So, how are those firemen shown in the budget at this point?
They're shown as vacant positions in the, in our listings.
Okay.
So, if you look at page, that lists all the personnel, there's, I think it's about three or four pages down in our budget package. I think it's page three of five. You'll see a, a bunch of those, four vacant and two additional vacant ones there. Those are gonna be replacements for disabilities that are, we're waiting for to be off the books.
So, so they're shown in the, in the wages and, and where, where does the grant money come in? Is that shown on these, on these pages or is that separate, accounted for separately?
The grant money is, it offsets the wages and should be listed in there.
Okay. You kinda have to lead us through this, Chris, in terms of where that might be. I see the total of the wages.
I don't see it, I don't see it in here. There is an offset, but we'll, we'll get you a chart and that explicit answer via email tomorrow. That works for you.
Okay.
As chief or deputy, you know, and-
Is that perhaps in the overtime line?
Uh, no, it's not in the overtime. Well, um-
In other words, is the grant shown in the overtime line?
No.
As a, as a reduction?
Well, it is a reduction and, and that went to the wages up above.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a combination to pay for that for the duration was the raising the ambulance fees, a reduction in the overtime with the idea that that reduction in overtime, we could move some of that money to the regular salary line to pay for the four. But we'll get the exact detail as to how it lays out in the budget.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Okay. Go to the board, questions?
Yeah, I just wanna make a general observation that won't be popular. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. I think both yourselves, police department, great departments. I mean, I don't think that anybody could ever ask you to do more with what you have, you know, than what you do. I think, you know, the, the community supports you in everything that you do almost unconditionally. I think from a personal perspective, and I hadn't read your cover letter, chief, before the police chief left, and had they not been similar, I probably wouldn't be bringing this up, but these budget reviews used to be an opportunity for departments to outline the year and, and present to us all of the good things that they had done within the budgets that they had. And of course, there were a few deficiencies listed, but when I look at these letters, I don't know how this has turned into very little positive and there is essentially, you each have five deficiencies where, you know, it essentially says, you know, it doesn't, it no longer really outlines what you can do with what you've got. It takes a more negative tone to me and I always prefer to lead with something positive. And to, to just have this, I understand, you know, we're, we're all, you know, I wouldn't say that, you know, one of the letters request, you know, references difficulties the town has, you know, I don't know that the town has difficulties. Since 2009, you know, we have all had to learn how to do more with less. And, you know, we've been fortunate, I think, in the 10 years that I have been on this board, we've had a very conservative board and this board has, has protected to our best ability the, the, the wallets, for lack of a better term, of the taxpayers. We do the best we can with what we have. So, you know, while I know that, you know, you guys do a great job and that you have some budget constraints, like everybody does, you know, I just, maybe I'm not articulating my point well, but I just wish the tone of these presentations, I don't know how we get to where we are today, where it's a, where it's an outline of the deficiencies, you know, rather than a, a, kind of like you're, you're touting your own accomplishments. And it seems to me, I don't, didn't it used to be like that where these budget presentations were, were much more focused on the positive and how we've made the best use of our money? And, you know, perhaps we could do more if we had a little bit more? But now we see in both of these where it's basically an outline of the deficiencies saying, you know, we'll do our job the best that we can, but can't really do it as well as we would like to, and here are the reasons. And it's not your fault. I understand.
I think Bill set that tone. I agree. There was a point in time where Bill had them come in and talk about their deficiencies very specifically.
Yeah, I'd trace it to them too, that's right. Yeah.
But I think, you know, I completely agree with what you're saying. However, I think that this is their one opportunity to do, to do just that so that we know. I think it's important that we do know, but, you know, I, I think time also has been so restricted for us that we used to do a much more thorough-
Right.
-conversation back and forth where we could talk about the good and then get to the bad. They have a very, I mean, look at, they get two budgets in a half hour. I mean, come on, what, what can you do?
And that, that's our fault.
That is our fault.
It has nothing to do with you. That's our fault.
I think if they had the time, that they would outline all the accomplishments and then leave this but in a half hour's time. I think that we're left with just trying to figure out, you know, we know what they could do with the money because they've been doing it. We have to know what-
You know, I, I just hate that, that, you know, everything, and again, this is our fault for, you know, giving you half of a, of a 30-minute time slot and you're two hours la- later than you thought you were gonna be. You know, I, I just hate when things become completely money-focused and, you know, we, we don't get to, to spend any time on, on the good that your departments do. That, it, it has nothing to do with your budget. I mean, this is all, I'm just opining and telling you how I feel, but I just wish that we, we didn't get letters like this and that we had time for thorough presentations. It, it used to be different and I just, this is a different tone and quite honestly, it just doesn't, it's not a, you know, it's, it's less of a budget presentation and it's more of a bitch session saying, you know, we wish we had these things, give us more money. Yeah, but I get it, you know? So, it's no commentary on the budget you've put together.
No problem. No, I, I understand your point, Eric, and, and I will certainly make an effort next year to highlight some of the, the more positive stuff in my letter now that I know that that's what the board is looking for. We were going on prior direction from before and I thought that was-
Well, chief, if I might, I will, I will note that in the budget book, the budget narratives for each department were put there with the message to the board of the positive. So, if you look at the budget narrative that was provided to you, because I agree with you 100% about, you know, we, it's the job you're in, nothing's a perfect world and in the tone that I had heard the last couple of years was same thing. And I said to the departments this year, "In what we present to the taxpayers out in public and what we put into the budget book and what we put into the warrant will be a positive narrative about all the things that we're doing with the resources that you provide." I agree with you. I was a little disappointed in the tenor of the two letters that came in front, but I also am sensitive to the idea that administration, it bottles up or blocks up or tries to protect the board to some degree as it relates to making everything work with the resources we have. And the chiefs do have very limited time to come in front of you and I philosophically don't necessarily think that it's fair on my part to tell them to zip it up, just tell the board only the good things. And I, and I, though I didn't like the tone of the letters personally, I do believe that what they're expressing to you was a great frustration and we are working really hard to try to figure out how to change that direction and dynamic. And I'll be honest with you, it seems like every day that goes on, we just get hit with more and more tough news in this economy that a lot of people are celebrating, but we're just not seeing it on, on Main Street, aren't we? But it's not just unique here, though. It is important to point out that if you follow regionally and everything across the state, there are a lot of communities far worse than us. there are a lot of communities far worse than us, but we are holding the ship together and it's, I wish we could give you an infusion of capital, no question.
No, you know, I think, you know, we had, when was it, 2010 or 11, maybe 12? Then we, you know, we had a petitioned article for a public safety override and, you know, that was to the tune of what, 850,000, I think, split between the fire department and, yeah. I wish we could give you every penny that you needed. I mean, it serves everybody if you are successful. And, you know, it's incumbent on us to give you the resources that you need to be successful because, you know, if you fail, then we all fail. So again, you know, my comments don't really have anything to do with your budget. I think you do a great job, you know, we squeeze everybody. That's just what we do. You know, we have, we don't have the luxury of, oh, I suppose we could, but we don't go for overrides. We haven't gone for, other than a technical override in the 10 years that I've been on this board. And I think that has just been the policy. Would we like to give you more? Sure, but, yeah, I'll stop now. The stuff I'm saying doesn't really have anything to do with anything other than the, you know, my disappointment with the tone of both letters, not just yours.
Okay. Noted. Thank you. I mean, I'd like to illustrate, though, that, you know, we've basically been level funded every single year with the small increases to contractual agreements and step increases for as long as I've been deputy chief, and that was 2009, 2010. And this is the first manpower increase in 15 years, since 2003 when we opened Station 3. And we really appreciate your support and the town's support. Would we like to have more guys? Absolutely. I think we could do a much better job with more staffing and be able to answer the calls quicker with more people and, because we run out of people. And the other thing is exactly what Mr. Knappich highlighted about the line of duty injuries. We're currently nine people short right now and it's putting a huge hurting on the overtime. And I can't control that. It's something out of my hands. I can't control the 911 phone ringing and I can't control the injuries, unfortunately. We've done everything we could as far as getting the best equipment for these guys to help them in their lifting techniques and everything else. And it was still, unfortunately, it's a very physical job. We're lifting people multiple times a day, multiple calls a day. I mean, on one call, they're lifting someone up to five times, you know? The stretchers are helping tremendously and hopefully we'll see that later on will be a benefit and we'll get a reduction in the injuries and we'll have more people on duty to handle the call volume, so. But we do seriously appreciate everything that's been given to us. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. That's all. I've said too much.
No, I think, Eric, you've said it well and I appreciate your comments and I echo them. Although I haven't had the experience in terms of the prior budget rounds, I too was struck by the tone of the memos, but I clearly sensed frustration. I would certainly find, now, maybe I'm alone, but I would certainly find value in better understanding, you know, what the preferred budget would be in terms of meeting the service demands. Maybe that's not part of the narrative, but if you're meeting the demands today, you know, ideally what the department would prefer to have is a budget. Sometimes it's helpful in the budget exercise to know what you need and then figure out what you can afford. I know what we're doing is focused on what we can afford, but I do think that at some point in budget discussions, I've at least always found a value in understanding what we need. And I'm not afraid of having a conversation at all that if we need to go to the voters to make sure that the police and fire maybe get an override or get more money, I have no qualms about going to bat and putting that out there. So I'm, I at least am open to that and ultimately letting the voters decide and putting that, putting that honest question out there for them. I see the frustration on, with you, I see the frustration with our police department. And, you know, I have no, I have no problem examining that and then having a discussion here as to whether or not we think it's appropriate to maybe try to find some extra money and let the voters have a crack at it. So I'm not afraid of that at all. I'm continually amazed at the amount of volume of activity at the fire department. The numbers keep going up. It's just nonstop. And obviously, you know, with the injuries or the outages that you're dealing with, that's clearly a constraint that I know is frustrating. We did have a metric study that documented the fact that you need more people. And it's some, so from my point of view, and I'm just, again, I'm just speaking for myself, one selectman here, but I'm anxious to think through how we solve that problem. It's a problem. And unless we solve it, or at least have a game plan, it's only going to wear out, it creates more burnout and more problems internally. And then it becomes a difficulty from a management point of view. So at some point, if we're not going to address it in this budget go around, at some point, we need to have a much more open conversation about what we're doing here and how do we want to solve these problems. So I appreciate you sort of working within the limitations of the town, but I'm very much open to having a more robust discussion as to the kind of budget you think you really need going forward. And I understand how these budgets get worked up. You basically sort of laid out some parameters and you've got to work within them, but I'm open to having a much broader budget discussion, particularly on the public safety side because, I mean, the reality is, is look, I mean, crime is down. I mean, you folks have done an incredible amount of work. The numbers don't lie. There's an enormous amount of work that you folks do, so. And I'm just amazed at how much you're able to do within the limitations that you have. So beyond that, I don't have any specific questions, Mr. Chairman, about the budget and the details themselves. But I very much appreciate all that you do on behalf of the town.
Thank you.
Are you carrying guns now? I wonder how your crime was down, how crime was down under your control, that's all.
No, but we do, you know, we're going to have ballistic gear on the ambulances, helmets and vests and all that. Unfortunately, that's the world we live in now. And I never thought I'd have to buy bulletproof vests and helmets for our paramedics, but that's what we have to do now because of the whole active shooter issues and so.
First of all, I'd like to commend you on the work that you do. You guys do a great job. You're well praised in the community for what you do, especially by the population. You have, you have a tendency to serve more than the other and that's elderly people. Like Mark, I have no problem with receiving information from you as to where you feel you could use additional funds to make improvements to critical areas like response times. I think that's very important that you bring that to our attention and that we can weigh and balance and see if we can do anything about that. I don't look at this letter as a totally negative thing. You talk about the four paramedics and what benefit it's going to have to the department in terms of better response times and sharing workload and reducing overtime. I don't, look at those things as negative things. Look at those as positive things. But certainly, I think it'd be really, you'd be remiss if you didn't bring these issues to our attention. I think one of the critical performance issues within your department is the time in which you respond to level-one emergencies because that can mean the difference between somebody having their Wheaties tomorrow or being the center of attention.
Absolutely.
And, you know, as far back as when Bill Hinchey was here, I was particularly interested in response times. And I remember back even then, there was some perceived deficiencies in those measures which apparently have persisted over time. Can you comment on that?
You know, I think it's just in the number of personnel we have on duty as well as how we're dispersed in the three stations around the town. We do, we do very well on the first call. If the firefighters and paramedics are in the station, we can get to somebody very quickly from that first call. It's the second call, which happens very frequently as Matrix identified. The concurrent calls is where we're suffering. So once Station 2 and 3 are committed on calls, there's nobody in those buildings. And when the second call comes in to West Yarmouth or Yarmouth Port, it's being serviced from South Yarmouth. And that's a long run for those guys all the way across town. So our response times, our data is a little skewed because of that anomaly, okay? Because we're servicing two other districts from the main station on that second and third call, it shows us a weaker response time than if we had, say, two stations with six people in each station. Now, the first call, they handle, the second call, they handle. And if you, if you look at it from that perspective, it also coincides with the library presentation earlier. The library's in the flood zone in South Yarmouth, as is Station 1 currently with the new flood maps. So I think long range, it wouldn't be a bad idea to take another look at maybe going to a two-station operation, putting one in the center of town. You can reduce the number of apparatus we have currently because we're not going to staff three stations with apparatus. So we may, we may not need six engines. Currently, we have two pumpers in each station. With two stations, we may be able to go to four or five. Five would be more comfortable with me, the way they go down quite frequently, unfortunately, for repairs and maintenance. But I think that would address the second calls, which are very frequent, a little bit better than trying to go from South Yarmouth all the way across to Yarmouth Port or the far reaches of West Yarmouth. The other option is you add more personnel to the three stations you have. Again, it's more personnel. That's going to directly affect how fast we're going to get to these people.
In terms of first call response, do you find significantly reduced response times than you do on the second, third calls? Are you within acceptable limits on those first call responses, most of the time?
Yes, yes, most of the time we are. Yeah, it's the second and third calls, especially in the outer districts, is where we're suffering on the response times.
If you went with the two-station model, would you have one on the north side and maybe one in West Yarmouth?
I'd keep, obviously, the West Yarmouth station because it's built in '07. It's a.
It's out of the flood zone.
Yeah, it's out of the flood zone. It's a hardened facility. It's hurricane-three proof standard. And I would look to the center of town, somewhere in the West Yarmouth Road, Old Town House, Forest Road, where we own land. And if you place something in that area, it can, it can cover the north side much quicker as well. It can also go to West Yarmouth Road and go both directions, north and west, and still get to South Yarmouth. The only place that would be the far reach would be that south of 28, South Shore Drive area, the motel block. They'd be a little bit longer. Obviously, we're right down the street from there, so we get there very quickly. But it's only within a few minutes going straight up Forest Road, straight across to South Street and down. It's a pretty direct route. And then you've got Station Avenue to traverse both sides of town as well, off of Old Town House. This was looked at several years ago, I think in the mid-'90s when Chief Brown was the chief. And I remember they did a study and back then, based on the call volume we were doing, which was significantly less than what we're doing now, they chose to keep the three-station configuration going forward. But I'm looking at now, the way we're operating and the deficiencies in those two outlying stations with only three personnel there, that's really causing a hardship to the, not only the people in those areas, but also the members that are serving them. Because, you know, they're doing their best. They're hurrying to that call as fast as they can get there safely. But we're getting a second 911 call from that individual saying, where's the ambulance? And they don't know that the ambulance, I'll give you an example. A gentleman on 6A called twice in a very short period of time because he knows he's five houses down from Station 2. But he doesn't know Station 2 is on a chest pain at King's Way and Station 1 is coming all the way across to help his wife. So he had called back very irate the second time, saying, the fire station's right next door. Where are the guys? And the dispatcher was very good and very professional and had to say, sir, I'm sorry, but that crew is on another call at King's Way and on another call. The ambulance is coming from South Yarmouth. So we do the best we can with what we've got to work with, but sometimes it's not enough.
And in that example, that call they wrote down as a higher priority call, was it?
Yeah, it was a chest pain call, yeah. And it came in a lot earlier than the second call. So, you know, that call came in and then 15 minutes later, we got the second call for that second call in Yarmouth Port. And the same thing happens in West Yarmouth every day.
Good. Thanks.
I just want to say that you guys do an amazing job with being level-funded, additional calls. Not only are the calls additional, they're more complex. You're dealing with a lot of mental health issues, things that are just, it's amazing. So I think at some point in time, we're going to have to keep looking at what the long-term solution is. You know, I think we're getting by, but I don't know how long that that's going to happen for. I found it interesting, though, in all of your social media posts over the last few months, that you've changed your name to Yarmouth Fire and Rescue. The town of Yarmouth Fire and Rescues. Are you working towards trying to change that or?
I'm not aware of that. I'll let him talk about that.
It seemed like it was a conscious effort to make sure that it was changed, so I was just.
I'll have to look into it. I got a couple of younger guys to help me with the social media.
Yeah, Catherine Armstrong was doing it and then he retired.
I just.
We're posting a lot more.
Yeah.
But I never noticed that. So I'll find out. It's, but it's no conscious effort.
Okay.
They might be planning something there that I don't know about, but we'll find out.
The only other thing is, it's interesting because I think when we do, what we do here, we're always watching other towns and, you know, I always ask myself about the call firefighters and how they can supplement because I know that you've talked about training with them and, you know, I always wonder if it's something that we could look into more. But I was watching a news program, I think recently, it was kind of a funny scenario where the guy was really trying to get his call firefighter volume up by posting really funny signs on his thing to get people interested. Did you see that news article? It was funny. It was, I think it was like Westboro. It's like best fire department in Westboro. And so I think it's, I think it's hard filling slots much like the police.
It is, very similar.
So that's always going to be a challenge that we're going to have to keep so when we can't backfill quickly. And, you know, whatever we can do to help get line-of-duty people back to work as fast as possible if there's something from the town, I think that, you know, we just have to keep having that conversation. But I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
I had just a couple of comments. You know, obviously, there's a big tie-in between, you know, the line-of-duty injury issue and the number of people that you have out for that reason and the concurrency issue, you know, that's, and we've got to, and it's not on your back. We've got to solve this line-of-duty problem and, you know, look to help maybe from other districts and try to get a broader look at, you know, perhaps, I don't know if there's other departments that have dealt with the issue, been more successful or not. Maybe there's ones that are having more of an issue at this stage. I'm sure you run into that discussion in, you know, the associations that you're involved with that, you know, I'm sure everybody is.
It is, it is a topic at the state chiefs meeting when I go there. A lot of, we're not alone, obviously, here in Yarmouth. A lot of departments are having the same problems we're having with the injuries as well as the staffing, as well as replacements. So the demand for paramedics is tremendous right now and it's very hard to get paramedics to work here. We just went through the process for the four grant positions and we got pretty far in the process with physicals and they were going to take their agility test and two of them took jobs closer to home, off Cape. And so unfortunately, we had to start over with those two. But we're there now. We got the four positions all set to go. They're, two of them, they're going to take their strength and agility tomorrow, or Thursday, rather. Thursday, I'm sorry, on Thursday. So that'll be good. Once that's done, then we can get them on two weeks of orientation and get them right on the floor working. So that's the hope. But the academy, similar to the PD, we might be faced with going to Springfield instead of Stowe because Stowe is backlog till October. We have one in Stowe currently right now. Another one is slated to go the first week in February, next week. And then after that, there's no openings till October, November in Stowe. And I know, I talked to Chief Burkin Sandwich and he's sending two of his individuals to Springfield just because he has no other option. So it's, it makes it, makes it hard, you know, it really does.
You know, on this, on this question about the station manning and two stations versus three, I don't know if it's even possible, but can you? versus three, I don't know if it's even possible, but can you station vehicles with men at, let's say, a temporary facility or, or at an existing town location that is not actually a fire department and see how that works? Is there any way to do that?
Well, I can give you just the one example that I remember when I was a captain. And when we, when we would train at the dump, right just past the fuel area, past the scale house, straight in like you're heading towards the transfer station, we would do our hose testing there, we would do our master stream appliance work there and shoot the water into the leaf piles, you know, just, just for training. And, and so we're all in the center of town. And if you look at that data, when we got calls, because the whole group was there, all three stations, we, we looked at that data when they responded from that site to the, to their respective districts, and it was not that much of a difference from being in the stations that they were in.
Okay.
You know, the only difference would be if they went to Comickwood Heights, obviously, that's a longer run.
Sure.
You know?
Right, right.
Or if they went to Great Island, that's a longer run from that center point of town, you know? But we certainly could do that, there's ways of, and we may have some old data that I can look for from that previous study that was done in, in the mid-'90s that highlighted something in the center of town, and they do, they drew circles on how many minutes and what, what circle that was in, on the map. So we can work on that, certainly.
You know, obviously, I don't, I don't want to play with anything, wouldn't want, suggest that you play with anything that might be life-threatening to somebody, you know? But, but if there was a way to, to, to run some studies of-
Right.
What alternate locations might, might do in terms of response times and so forth, might be helpful. But, you know, you do a great job. I, I have to add my personal thanks to the department. I had a call at my house going back a couple of months ago. Guys were great, and I really appreciated the help, so.
That's great to hear.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Did you want to talk about the other towns that you asked about?
Did Chief, did he have a comparable, he would ask for that?
Okay.
He does have a presentation available.
Okay, oh, great. Yeah, if you, if you want, I know you're kind of pressed for time here, but we can go through it kind of quickly. So we broke it down, basically, the two Cape towns, Sandwich and Falmouth, and we did those two first because they're more similar.
Just two slides.
Yeah, it's not a lot, it's two slides. So both Falmouth and Sandwich, they run a fire-based EMS system as well. So both the firefighter, paramedics are either, they can, they're all cross-trained, and they can do both jobs. When you look at the off-Cape communities to compare to, which is the next slide, Salem is, is fire-only, they have a separate EMS, and I don't have those numbers. But just their budget alone in Salem is, if you, is $9,200,000. Their overtime's $9.66, they have 95 personnel, just for the fireside. Now, they do run to medicals with the engine, and the ambulance meets them there with two people, and it's a private service.
Okay.
And I talked to all three fire chiefs, Salem, Middleborough, and Wareham, and they wish they had the ambulance that they were running as part of their department, because they're not happy with the private service.
$200,000.
And if you look at Salem and the size budget they have, they do 100 more calls than us. We did 7,303, they did 7,427, and that's EMS and fire in Salem.
Good land area.
I'm not, I don't have the land area, I can get that. Their population is pretty dense, though, at 43,000, but I don't have their square mileage. I have the square mileage on everybody else, but I did not get that from the Salem chief. And then Middleborough is same thing, they have a, they have a private ambulance company that's dealing with their medical calls, again, just, just two personnel showing up with that, and they run their engine to meet them. Wareham is a little bit different. They are two separate entities that are town-run. So Wareham EMS is a town-run EMS department, and Wareham Fire is, is separate. Now, as part of Wareham, they also have the onset district. So Wareham is very similar to, say, Barnstable with the fire districts. So they have Wareham and onset district. And the Wareham EMS services both. So it's hard to compare those numbers with us because it's really not apples and apples. But at least Falmouth and Sandwich are. So if we go back to that one, you can look at, Falmouth is, you know, higher population, obviously a lot bigger area geographically. They staff five fire stations, we staff three. They have two fire stations in Falmouth that have one person in them. And it's really not a, and the Falmouth chief is struggling with that, and he's, he's trying to get that corrected. So, you know, he's, he's got a huge challenge there. West Falmouth and Woods Hole, he has one firefighter by himself, and he takes the truck by himself and does the best he can, until more help gets there. It's not really a great situation for them. And he's obviously frustrated down there with that. And they do 8,000 calls, yeah, they, they were the first department on Cape Cod to break 8,000 calls. And they're still growing and developing in Falmouth, there's a lot of building going on down there. Sandwich is very similar to us, they run three stations, just like we do. His overtime is, is, is actually higher than ours now, it's $1,158,000, but his overall budget is less because he has less personnel. And he only does, he does just under 5,000 calls at almost 4,900.
Okay, yeah.
So that's relative to his personnel. But his operation-wise is very similar, he's got the three stations staffed in Sandwich, and he's obviously trying to get more manpower as well, because you look at his overtime, it's very similar to ours at over a million.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have enough people to handle the, the call volume.
Okay.
So that's what we came up with for those. I could certainly get you more details if you need them, and-
Thank you for doing that, I think that's helpful. It gives us kind of a perspective of what, what's going on elsewhere and, you know, from an overall financial standpoint, you know, gives us a picture, yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, and if you need copies of that, I'm not sure, Chris, did they get copies of that?
Out this morning.
Okay, yeah, so if you have any other questions, I mean, certainly, you can email me or give me a phone call.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're getting ready to, with your blessing, to launch a request for proposal for potential land uses at 50 Workshop Road. It's part of a long-duration economic activity desire that the town has. So we had identified that in 2017 town meeting, we were able to get the authorization. Now we're at the point where we've had some interest expressed to us, we have the land disposition policy, and the next step is to go to the marketplace to see what it is that we could capture. And we wanted to get your feedback on that.
Yeah.
Yes, we want to give you an alternative presentation, actually trying to bring money into the town to pay for some of the initiatives that have been talked about today. As Dan indicated, this was actually something that we started as part of the Cape Cod Energy Park process about four years ago, where we were looking at doing an anaerobic digester, solar and battery technology. And we initially went forward with an RFP for the anaerobic digester, but we had other items that we're looking to put in place so that we could generate revenue, to try to bring in non-tax-related revenue to offset some of the issues that we're struggling with. And this particular project allows us to, you know, move forward, we're trying to bring in some of that additional revenue.
So in, in your packet, you have a three-page memo that outlines a few of the concepts. So in addition to the, the energy items, we have had some commercial interest in, in using the site. And like Dan said, this would really kind of just test the water a little bit. There's a, on the third page, there's a couple of pictures that might help. The one on top shows just the locus of where we're talking about. This is really in back of the septic treatment, up to Exit Eight, right around the lights. And then the picture on the bottom half of the page shows you where the, the treatment facility is, that's in kind of a yellow color. And then in orange are the areas that we're, we're talking about making available. And the different boundaries and the lettering that's on there are just a way to break up, it's not a commitment, it's just a way that the site could be broken into different pieces that could be let either individually or collectively, who knows what we'll get.
And this, this, just a concept, it doesn't mean that that's what we'll get back. When we receive the responses from an RFP, this is just some things that we've been hearing about, and just wanted to give some people some ideas of the fact that this doesn't have to be one, one-purpose type of piece of property, it could be divided into different sections for different purposes.
So, so the breakup of this site, then, is we're not asking people to respond with those specific boundaries in mind?
No.
No, they're suggestions. I mean, it's, it's, it's just one way.
So if somebody came back and said, "Well, I'd be interested in A and B, but I don't want F and C," or-
And then other people, and, and it's not an all or nothing. So we could get multiple different respondents, and we could award this to multiple different individuals to, you know, do some different types of things on this particular parcel.
I mean, what's the topography of that land? Is it-
It's pretty flat.
Pretty flat.
There is some hill, when you get into Area E, actually, we, Rich Bienvenu, Liz Argo, Maria Russeva, and I actually went through this property, looking at whether we should, we could do some solar installation on that particular property, because the topography is a little tough there, but it would be fine for a solar installation. So we're trying to generate as much revenue and economic benefit as we can from this particular parcel.
So is that still a possibility?
That is still a definite possibility.
There's, I mean, the, the state land along the highway abuts that, right?
That's correct.
Is that all state right-of-way, then, right over to our property edge?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all state property.
State property, I don't know if that it's right-of-way.
They have right-of-way to that property, to their own property, yes.
Yeah, okay. What are you looking for us to do at this point?
To kind of say yes, move forward with an RFP.
Okay.
Or no, or come back, or some combination of the three.
All right, are there, I guess, is there a motion, first of all, to move ahead with this?
And this isn't a motion or-
Really, an RFP?
It's really an RFP, it's just to give you an understanding that this is proceeding, that, you know, given as a verbal yes, this is something that we should pursue to try to generate some additional revenue to offset some of the other, you know, tax burdens that are here. But, you know, we can proceed with the RFP, given that we had permission at town meeting, but we didn't want to do that without you knowing that we were going to do that.
This is something totally new.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of a new initiative.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that you were, you had a briefing on it, if you had any concerns about anything, we wanted to hear what those might be before it would ever go public, so that it didn't catch off guard.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
So the RFP process, who makes the determination whether or not it's something that we want? Is that Dan?
We'll have a selection committee that looks at that. And traditionally, what's happened here has been that those types of procurement issues have been in the administrator's office. But, you know, we, we broke from that tradition with the water management, RFP, the golf, those are very significant, large-impact, large-opportunity items of concern to people. So in this particular case, you know, this is new to us, completely new. And, and this is kind of like a test pilot for some other projects percolating up down the line that we'd like to bring in front of the board. So if there was, you know, if you were comfortable delegating that because of the detail that we have, we'd obviously share with you what the results of the responses were, but it's certainly something we can have a further dialogue on. But I, I got a good dose of town meeting in 2017, and I wanted to make sure we don't do any missteps with any of this, and this was a good opportunity to get in front of the public.
I'm just concerned with our facility there, that there'll ever want to be some type of expansion. I mean, I hate to-
Part of the analysis of the uses is looking at, working with the different departments to, to understand what the future use of the site would be, such that, you know, we identified parcels or locations that we weren't going to have an impediment to. So like the anaerobic digester section's kind of been safeguarded, the area, like anything with solar panel, that's temporary anyways. There's some other ideas that we have heard about, that there'd be some interest in, those could be short-term leases. So we're very mindful of not boxing us into a scenario where we, we would want it in the future.
We're working very closely with Jeff Colby in DPW. We actually get together every Thursday to discuss with the folks that are doing the anaerobic digester project, you know, what the needs are for that overall facility. This would, is in coordination with the needs of that facility. We have a 30-year-old septic facility, septic-only facility plant, and those are rare, that you would ever have a septic-only facility plant. That may survive what we do with the wastewater treatment plant, but the cost to distribute bile solids for the entire Cape, to dispose of the bile solids, are going through the roof. And that's why we are, we're working to put an anaerobic digester somewhere on Cape Cod. Didn't work out in Borne, but I think our project is a little bit better, given the fact that we have rail, we have solid waste and food waste, and we have bile solids all coming here. So that's why this was a good facility. But we weren't, you know, we already went through the process of trying to analyze, is this a good place to put in a wastewater treatment plant? And this was discarded for the Buck Island site. And now we have other options based on some of the regional discussions that are being had. So there wasn't really any plans to do any expansion on a regional transfer station or on the salt, the, the septic facility, except for putting in a complimentary type of facility, which is the anaerobic digester.
And what is that building that's on D now?
That is a 10-million-gallon water tank. And part of the provision, and it's a massive concrete structure, would be costly if we ever had to remove it and we decommissioned this plant. And that's, again, why we're trying to make sure we have enough money in our septic facility fund, so that if we ever have to decommission this, unlike the Tri-Town plant, it doesn't fall back on the taxpayers. That plant actually is used, or that tank is used to give water to the golf department early in the season, so that they can irrigate the golf course. So part of what we've indicated as must-dos in this particular project is, if you want to destroy this and utilize that particular piece of property, you have to put in infiltration beds over in Buck Island. That would actually help us if we were to work with the Town of Barnstable, because they would need to bring back the effluent and dispose of it there. We would also be able to use that for the septic facility, as well as the anaerobic digester. So actually getting rid of that 10-million-gallon water tank would be a strategic help to a lot of the other things that we're trying to do. And, and what we're looking at now with DEP's approval, we can actually spray irrigate 27 holes of the golf course, and we would actually be putting the water into the ponds, so that that water could be diluted with rainwater, and then they would use that to do the irrigation. So we could go without this, and this would be, again, if we had to decommission this particular site, instead of spending $3 million and coming back to the taxpayers, we would be able to have a fund that the septic facility is building, because of all the work we did four and five years ago to re-engineer that facility, as well as, you know, doing some of these types of things, to either keep that septic facility and the transfer station facility going for another 30 years, because we're bringing in food waste that we can use for an anaerobic digester, or we're bringing in bile solids, then we can get more life out of this particular piece of property.
Okay, Eric?
Any questions?
Mark?
No, I think it sounds, I'm, I'm good to go, and I appreciate you bringing it back to the board. I know these generate a little bit of concern, but I, I think what you're doing is terrific. So I'm on board.
Any questions, Mike?
No questions.
Okay. Just, just one question, a curiosity item. A and F parcels, are those, do those abut, like the car dealers- abut, like the car dealership?
Yes, it does.
Wasn't there some interest in?
Yes, there is.
Okay, so, I think I had heard something about...
There could be, you know, a potential RFP respondent that may be associated with those properties.
Okay.
But we have to have it open to everyone.
We have to offer it, right, right, so, so they may be one of the ones that might be interested.
Absolutely, and that would help out with economic development, because they would be a more viable entity.
Right, yeah.
And the beauty of the RFP really is, is that it's a very public process.
Sure.
And so, the message, you know, I was talking to a commercial realtor last week, and they'll love this.
Yeah.
This is a great possibility, but it kind of opens the door to possibility.
Well, I think, you know, there probably would be those possibilities for those other businesses in there that are in that area that may have...
Right there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a sizable warehouse there that is kind of a combination of animal feed, dog and cat food, da-da-da-da-da, yeah, and they may, you know, who knows?
And there's some possibilities for something really substantial as well.
Well, that's right, that's right, yeah.
With, with jobs, with benefits.
Right.
You know, those, those types of benefits could accrue to us if, if we offer this and, and things work, work well.
Good.
Otherwise, you know, we'll get, you know, revenue from other sources, but trying to maximize the revenue, so that we can offset some of the issues that you hear during budget time and, you know, related to schools and those types of things.
If we don't ask, we don't know.
So I guess, at this point, it sounds like everybody's in, yeah, let's, let's move, move forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Short sweep.
So the next item is the warrant.
Yeah, if you would, I have an updated article list here that's a little bit different than what's in your packet, so it's being passed around right now.
Okay.
The layout is, to the extent possible, very similar to what's been done every year.
What changed about this?
What, what changed, the, the middle part of it is a little bit different in that we've added a number of items specifically related to short-term rental taxation, legislation at the local level that needs to be adopted, the wastewater infrastructure components there at, that infrastructure investment fund at 24, with that in mind, with these short-term rentals, we're going to have in front of you on the 12th, a presentation by town council as to each incremental piece of legislation and what it means to us, so that'll be an opportunity as to have some decisions as to whether or not you want to advance those to town meeting, I didn't really want to get into like a discussion of that tonight, because it's very late, but, but we're still working out some of the language on what that is to us and running down some past local option legislation that we needed to find out if we had adopted, so that'll be on the 12th.
Just so you know, there's a lot of things about that bill that already needs to be amended, and it's not yet amended.
Yeah, so, well, that's what I mean, so, so it may end up being one of these things where we take a big pass, because some of it's going to be mandatory, but we wanted to make sure that if there was an opportunity for the board that wanted to, to advance something, we'd be in line to do that.
Giorgio, is that his name?
John Giorgio.
Yeah, he was at the selectman councilor's meeting last month.
Right, yeah.
His advice was to, to wait at this point.
There's kind of a, a feeling like, let a year go by, for those towns that adopted the mandatory, or the local hotel tax, you're going to be in good shape anyways, and then the 2.75 Cape Trust Protection Fund, everybody's got to be in for a year, so you, you really can't spend money you don't have, you know, so there is a, a school of thought to let it play out, I do know, I'm, I'm asking Bruce Murphy to provide to me on a weekly basis how many people are coming out of the woodwork to register, we already know that this has caused some people who have never been registered with us to register their properties for being in the rental program, so there'll be a lot of things that I think that'll come to our attention as the year progresses. On the second page is the CPA articles and zoning, and probably of significance is 45 is, you had a presentation a while back on the stormwater permit, MS4 program, back in July 1, it went into effect, so there's some bylaw amendments we have to make to align the EPA's requirement for that, the Beach Capital Improvement Fund, which we'll present to you, was also added to this, we're still working on, I think we had the final language has been completed recently, and the annual golf fee increase that rolls in that capital assessment charge, kind of resets the financial plan for golf, that'll be there. We had one petitioned article from the public, prohibition of plastic containers, talking to Phil Gedet, doesn't look like it's in a form that the Attorney General would approve, so, so, you know, in the end, it may get withdrawn, and then the only thing I'd say is based on the conversation tonight, if you wanted that, a 49th item potentially, related to that library situation, we could draft some language if you wanted to reserve a place for that, otherwise, we are planning for a fall town meeting, there is some decisions to make, I know the, the DPW Building Committee, they are working to try to get in line for an estimate for spring town meeting, but that may be something that gets to be a little bit out of reach, and if not, maybe it rolls down into the fall, we don't want to, we don't want to put the brakes though on that, project's got a lot of momentum right now, so what ends up being the, the number, the actual number that goes to town meeting, I don't know right now, the other one that's on there is 21, the Law Enforcement Group Four Special Article, that's the, the one, the DNR request for, DNR officers were running, were asking the county to give us a impact of what that retirement assessment would look like, if we were to accept that, that'll be a topic at a future board meeting for discussion. We did add the deregionalization placeholder for a discussion future on that, we were asked by the school to add two items, 19, the revised regional agreement, and number seven, a stabilization fund, that they've asked us to reserve space for, and they'll have a presentation on that at a later date.
I'm not ready to request the, the infrastructure, the wastewater infrastructure.
Yeah, that's on there, so, so one, so, to the school of thought, 24, we put the fund in place, how we, how we put money into the fund for a future discussion, in Sandwich, they were way ahead of us as it relates, so they were comfortable doing not only the fund in one town meeting, but they also did the, the reduction of CPA and the addition of 1% from the fund, I don't think, I think you've got a good dose of the, of where we're at here, we didn't necessarily think right now that we could be ready, public presentation wise, to convince the majority of town meeting to support where we're at, the final projections financially aren't in, I know in the Sandwich case, they told me that what was really successful on their part was they knew the dollar value that they needed to set that, fund that, to finance the projects they had already identified, and they built a public campaign, information campaign around that exact situation, we're not even close to that, but it is important to get the fund up, so that we don't have to deal with that at a later date, but the fund doesn't have any money.
I think the faster we move on getting that percentage in there, the, the less impact it's going to be overall.
Oh, understood, right.
Have the money in there, I mean, we're already spending money now.
Right.
For planning, and, and that, that 2.75% grant won't, won't go towards planning ever, so I think the longer we put off making that switch, the, the more potential tax impact that there'll be.
I, I agree, but I, I'm concerned that the CPA has an enormous institutional support base, that not everybody's fully cognizant of what is in front of us on this wastewater issue, and what the power that tool could be, so...
That'll be a good task, wouldn't it?
It's a big task, the other issue is, that's on there, is the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, that's number 13, and annual town meeting change, we put that in there as well.
So what, I'm sorry, what is 25?
25 is, so 25 is part of the short-term rental tax provision, there's a component, a 2.75% assessment on all these short-term rentals to go into the Cape Infrastructure Trust Fund, the way it laid out was that it was originally going to be a fund that set up money for water projects on the Cape.
Yeah.
And it was going to be an opt-in, which meant that if you wanted to take advantage and be accessing those capitals, you had to vote for it at a town meeting, it came out of that as automatic, year one, everybody's in.
Okay.
So everybody gets an assessment, year two, you can decide if you want to not do that anymore.
Okay.
But you can't access the funds anymore.
Okay.
So, there is a provision, this will be part of the discussion on the 12th, there is a 3% surcharge under mitigation impact fee for professionally managed and owner-occupied managed homes, so there's been a school of thought, I mean, this is a lot of taxation, this is a lot of new taxation, perhaps some communities will opt in, obviously they have to with the 2.75, but they might prefer to opt out in year two and take the 3% mitigation money, because that's going to get spent in your town, the 2.75 gets put in this bucket of money, every town's supposed to send a delegate to control the process of who gets the money out of it, I can tell you that one of the bones of contention for a number of the towns was, was Chatham, Provincetown, Falmouth, and Barnstable all have now access to this, and part of that questioning was, they, can they move their debt service that they're presently funding and get a loan off of this fund? The answer to that is yes, so that leaves communities that are going to send the most amount into this fund not likely to get a dollar for dollar back, so it's causing a lot of consternation.
Okay.
That's why this is complicated, you know, it's probably worse than marijuana was last year.
Yeah, I think we need to allow for the library.
You want that item, sure.
I disagree.
Yeah, so we could put it in as a placeholder at this point.
We're going to make it a seven-hour town meeting, or something like that.
With that item, no, I don't think that, that item is going to drive it over the edge, but...
I think you set yourself up for failure to have the discussion without the information.
Well, so, I might ask, because this is the night we have to vote to close it, if you want to do it, can we have a vote for the 49th item as presented, and then I can close it and start working on it?
I'll vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
No.
I'll vote yes.
No. So it's three to two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great way to start.
Okay, we, do we need to vote to close the warrant?
Yes, if we could have a motion to close the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion or questions, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll move forward. All right, we're moving into the Town Administrator Annual Review.
To give further the record, why they say that the, we really did a great job on keeping to the schedule on the last item.
What? Why?
Just, just as an FYI, so I had to...
All right, well, well, first of all, I'll pass the summary around of the accumulation of the ratings, and one for Dan, and, this represents the averaging of the, the ratings from each of the select board members accumulated, and, and then arriving at the overall rating, which, I'm sorry, the overall rating should be 3.0, not 30, 3.0, the 33.0 is the total, so, so first of all, Dan, as, you know, I think you know, the provisions of your agreement are that you're entitled to a 5% increase if the ratings total to the, the 33 number, which they do, and, you know, we, I think it's, it's been an interesting year, with a lot of variables, and, and, you know, I think we all appreciate the letter that you prepared summarizing the activity over the year and the things that were interruptions at one, one time or another, but I think the, the consensus of our select board is you've done a, a good job in the year, and, and we believe you're an asset to the community.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So, we want to thank you for the efforts that, that you made during the year, and I, I think, you know, these are always difficult things to go through in public, and, and, but, I'd kind of like to get your, your thoughts on, on, you know, how you felt about the year, and, you know, where you think we're headed for the future.
It's a great question, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, I, in putting that document together, well, when I first came to town, I did not realize we would encounter so many challenges together, so let me just say that, there has been no shortage of very interesting scenarios and situations for us to work on, and I think in 2018, we were hit with a significant set of disrupting circumstances, most significant of which, of course, was the loss of Officer Gannon, Sergeant Gannon, that I, what, the performance here is a reflection of the team we have, this town has an exceptional workforce, the, I think with every event that I chronicled, the, the reason why we came out as strong as we did on that is a testament to the men and women that go to work for us every day, and it's not lost on me that whatever success that I achieve is due to a great team that we've assembled, that you've assembled, and that we've assembled together since I've arrived. I think what's important for us, I think, like, tonight is a good look into the future, we have a lot of very significant challenging things to get through together, I believe that the town is on a pathway to achieve really great things, but it's going to be a challenge, and communication's going to be important, I appreciate the fact that constant reminding and challenging my office to, to, to do what we do, to get the message out and build those community relationships is very helpful to us, to keep us focused on where it is that we want to go, and I think collectively, the, the challenge is, I think we have an opportunity in front of us in the 18, next 18 months, to engage the community with a series of workshops and engagement activities to decide what is the community over the next 20 years that the folks in town want to see, there's, I, I think that's, when I look around and let people say, well, where's Yarmouth going? I hear that all the time, well, I'm not really sure where it's going, and I think in the short amount of time, you know, we've got great momentum with the drive-in site, it's got a great potential, the connections in the bike path and the work that Tom Barron's done related to that, I think that's going to be a great thing, that the Opportunity Route 28 road construction, Route 6As, neighborhood construction presents to us, I think there's going to be a period in time that prior to a lot of this activity, we need to engage this industry, let them know what's going on, but then ask what, how they want to see it lay out into the future, and I think that'll be critical to all of our success, and I want to thank you for being good partners, great partners, I, I think we have a good working relationship, I look forward to going through this together, and I appreciate the thought that you put into the, into the evaluation, it's, I know it's a difficult process, it's not necessarily the most pleasant part of anybody's job, but, but I do appreciate the support you've given me, it's been, it's been a great work opportunity, and there are no shortage of interesting things to bite into, is what I would say.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and I think it's, you know, I, I think your words regarding the, the staff support and the, and the quality of the staff are, are appropriate, at the same time, you know, I've seen situations where leadership has spoiled a staff, an excellent staff, and has not allowed them to excel, and I, and I think you have allowed them to excel in this year, and, and led them, so we appreciate those efforts.
Thank you.
Are there things that you would have seen, you would have liked to seen gone differently this year?
You know, I, I think, just so... You know, I think to some large degree, like, if we don't get something over the finish line, that's kind of like, I take that as a personal failing, and if we have to go back at the table, what is it that we can do to try to do better? And I, you know, and retrospectively, we spent a lot of energy and effort engaging our next-door neighbor on a very important topic and through no fault of our own and with the great energy that the team put into it. And, you know, I think personally, I'm disappointed that we weren't able to get a solid agreement on behalf of our taxpayers such that we're in the situation that we're in today. You know, that to me is significantly problematic, that, I think the board was pretty eloquent in how it spoke about this as a great opportunity, except for the fact that the financial structure is untenable as it's presently structured. And so, we did what we could, we gave it to try, and there's work to be done on that. But in general, I think, you know, one of the areas also is, you heard again, we're trying to change that dynamic about all the things that are wrong or we don't have to, no, actually, we got a pretty good thing here and we gotta work together to focus more on how to make it even better than what it is. And so, I have a challenge amongst the staff to try to change that narrative. You know, this lingering effect of the '08-'09 budget crisis is still with us in many ways. And it's important to me to get a more upbeat, positive take on that from town staff going forward. And we've tried to do a number of relationship-building activities with the staff, we've got a ways to go on that to get more successful with that, but I think we've made some inroads on it. So, in general, if you, again, I'd say if you, did it go as good as you thought it could have? Not necessarily, but considering what we confronted, I thought we had a pretty good outcome.
How did you feel about the Vineyard Wind process and what happened with that entire...
I tried to put that out of my memory, but...
Well, we all, we all spent, you spent a lot of time, our board spent a lot of time in that area.
I would have hoped that somebody that wanted to be the community partner that we were told early on that they were going to be for us would have stepped to the plate with a better level of effort. But it became increasingly evident to us as the Lewis Bay citizenry got organized and put pressure on them, they were not ready for primetime in this town. I could not in good faith go to you and say, "This is gonna be a good partner, this is a good deal for us." To this day still, we don't have 95 percent of the questions we posed, an answer to them. And I would have thought that somebody that really wanted to be our partner would have done a little bit better. And unfortunately, I have the sour taste in my mouth now that we got stuck with all these legal bills. But the end product, though, I am of belief, is we have set the bar for engagement on this wind topic, and everybody's doubling down on more offshore wind. But what we did as a town will set a good benchmark between the board, the administration, the legal defense, and the citizenry, most importantly, because there's an element to that host community agreement called, "Does the citizenry want you here?" Because they could not answer those questions to any of our best ability, I feel like that was a great grand opportunity missed for us. But unfortunately, it's one of those things, the repercussions of damage to our, you know, really irreplaceable estuary system could not be overcome. I wish we had a better landing spot, frankly, on the whole thing, but the reality is, for how it laid out, we got the best possible outcome, which is they decided to go to our next-door neighbor.
I think there was some frustration, and I think you're right, I think we ended up in the right place, given the whole circumstances. You know, I think there was some frustration, I think, as we went along among some of our board members, including myself, and when it felt like we had proposals from Vineyard Wind that probably should have spent more time on your desk than being presented to the board at that time. So, you know, I think that that's something that we need to be careful of in the future. But in the final analysis, they weren't willing to come forward with credible proposals. So, you know, I think that that certainly was difficult. You know, going back, I think we were all frustrated with the school article at the last town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It's probably a bad memory.
Town meeting, the whole thing, we're gonna do better on that job this year.
And I'm not, I still don't know exactly what happened in that situation, but I think we were all frustrated with it, as you were.
Yeah.
So, I'll just open it up to the board, if there's comments or questions at this stage.
Want me to start?
Yep.
So, I'll do a quick, it's late, I'll do a quick little bit of praise and a little bit of what I hope you'll take as constructive criticism. You know, the praise would be that I think that you have gained a tremendous amount of knowledge in a relatively short period of time from someone who had no town administrator experience and certainly no experience with Yarmouth or maybe even Cape Cod. I feel like you have acclimated extremely well and that you're obviously, you know, you have a lot of irons in the fire, as, you know, some of which I wasn't aware of on your self-evaluation. So, you know, it's clear to see that you are, you're keeping busy and you're keeping engaged and you're involved, and I'm happy with that. So, I think, you know, I gave you, I gave you your knowledge high marks. The bit of criticism that I would offer you is that I feel like we have not adequately beat the mayor out of you sometimes.
He'd never be able to do that.
And these are just my personal feelings, but I think that sometimes your personal feelings and things that you want personally and things that you think should be done sometimes clouds your ability to effectively advocate on this board's behalf. You know, one example that I can use specifically is I felt like, you know, this board, we disagree on some battles, but we, I think, for the most part, we find consensus on the wars. And we were unanimously opposed to, you know, making, you know, any indication of support for this school-building project under the current regional agreement. And I felt like, and, you know, you may argue that this isn't the case, I felt like that you were supportive of it and therefore you did not use the many opportunities that you had in front of the MSBA to voice our opposition the way that we would have, or that we would have liked you to. So, you know, that's my criticism. You know, the people elect us to represent them, we hire you to represent us, and I feel like that sometimes there are instances where you don't like or agree with our position, but that's not your job to agree or, to be honest, even like what we, the positions we take, but it is your job to advocate for our position. So, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's well said. Eric, there are a lot of, the job is a very dynamic, not an easy job, so for us, often to sit here and say things is hard because there's a lot of things thrown at you every day, and I think you handle them very, very well in terms of your attitude on, like your comments that you just, you just had, you have a very positive attitude in bringing a group forward, and I appreciate that. I'm gonna say the same thing I probably said last year in terms of communication. I personally was surprised by the memo, several of the things that you were working on, I had no idea what you were doing. Some of the things, I think, that are things that we've actually discussed as a board previous to your time here and had other opinions on that. So, I feel like it's hard to not micromanage your time because I don't want to do that, but at the same time, I feel like, much like with the Vineyard Wind thing, you know, sometimes you're going down a path and you're focused, and I know you're trying to generate revenue, but you gotta make sure that the bus is behind you and, you know, that we're all going in the same direction. So, you know, in terms of the communication rating, I gave you three because the way that, I wasn't happy with the way that the performance evaluation said it, because when it talks about your communication and how you communicate and, you know, the grammar and things like that, I don't have a problem with your actual communication. I have more of a problem with kind of the lack of communication. I know I'm probably, you probably get sick of listening to me about the emails, but, you know, I don't know how you find a way to get us our emails every day, but you have to find a way. And if you need more staff, you need to let us know. But I think four days later, five days later, of issues we've already discussed, getting an email, I have a real problem with that. So, I don't know how you find a way to better communicate, meaning pass along information to us so we don't read it in the paper or we get the emails late. I think it has to become more of a priority to make sure that we're on the same, we're on the same bus, we're riding in the same direction, we all know what's going on. So, that's my one criticism, I think, is finding a way to somehow hone that skill a little bit.
Okay. Mike?
I think I'll try to comment really on some of the areas everyone else has. I think you have grown tremendously in this job in a short period of time, I'm very impressed with that. I remember what your experiential and skill level was when you first started and what it is now, and there's been very, very dramatic growth. To Eric's point, I think honestly, there's almost an inherent conflict, if you will, between a town administrator and a board of selectmen. Board of selectmen is a policy setting and chief executive authority, the administrator is supposed to carry out those policies and directives. But we're a part-time board and you're not interacting with us all the time, every day. And I think as an administrator, and as Eric said, with some of the residual mayor still in you, you have things you want to achieve and you want to go forward with those things, sometimes maybe without having the support of the board or maybe possibly even being in conflict with whatever the board's position is. But I think we should take some responsibility for that, too. And maybe we don't make, maybe we don't speak to you as directly as we should, maybe we think you understand from discussions where we stand. And it is kind of awkward because I think everybody wants to work harmoniously, and yet there are divisions in lines of responsibility and in terms of lines of authority that have to be drawn. And I think the board as well can improve in that respect. It was a tough year, and there were a lot of obstacles, I think, that presented themselves to impede probably some of the things you would have liked to have seen come to pass. Sean's death certainly was a very unsettling tragedy in this town that set everybody back. The Vineyard Wind thing came out of left field, and we didn't have really the adequate resources to respond to what they were trying to accomplish. As it turns out, in retrospect, after we looked at the host community agreement they came up with, they were working with Barnstable probably as their primary partner and having us maybe as another option. And I think they were deliberately playing us to a certain extent here. But having said that, I think our responsibility as a board is to drop things when we have important environmental interests that are potentially threatened, I think we have to protect our community. And that took an awful lot of time, we had a lot of public meetings and so forth. The schools, you did a good job in supporting us in the negotiations with the schools, a very good job. But unfortunately, Dennis did not want to capitulate. And, you know, there was a lot of time and effort that was spent there that didn't give a, if we could come up with a new agreement, there'd be something to really feel good about from the standpoint of the board and your perspective as well, but it just didn't happen. But that was another very time-consuming, uneventful endeavor, I think, that probably distracted you from some of the other things you probably wanted to do and accomplish. So, I mean, I get, I get it from your perspective, I've looked at things, you know, I mean, administrators want to say at the end of the year, "I did A, B, C, D," and they want to have a check-off list and they want to have some concrete accomplishments for their personal satisfaction, and let's face it, also for their resumes, you know? And I think because of that, sometimes it could put you into a conflict situation with the board, even though it may be unintentional on your part. And I think we have to both communicate a little bit better on that.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Mike. Mark?
I'm gonna, well, I think it's all been said, I think, I'm, I think at this point, I'm looking forward, Dan. And I think, I think we're at a very strong position here going forward as a town, as a community. I think you've assembled a very, very strong team, I think it's, I appreciate your sort of sharing kudos with the others that have been working with you in terms of some of these initiatives. And, you know, I know sometimes we may disagree, but you know, the thing, the fact is, your door is always open. I know that if we need to talk about something, you're quick to return my call. I would probably say that maybe I need to reach out more and make a little harder effort to communicate. But overall, I think you've got the town in a very strong position going forward. You've got a lot of things, a lot of balls that we're juggling, a lot of initiatives going forward. I love working with this group that you've assembled, that's incredibly talented, and I'm looking forward to continued success and continued progress. You're right, we have a lot of challenges, but I think we've got the right group here to tackle them and move forward. And, you know, I've learned a lot from you and I appreciate that, I appreciate all your help. And like I said, I'm looking forward, as Belichick said, it's on to Cincinnati. You know, I think there's a lot of good to come here in Yarmouth.
Atlanta.
For Atlanta.
He did say Cincinnati, I don't know where that came from.
Well, just to wrap things up, as I said to start with, I think you've done a good job, it's been a pleasure working with you, and we look forward to another year.
Thank you. If I may, just real briefly, I welcome any opportunity to learn on the job from you. You all have huge amounts of years of experience in this line of work, a lot of roots in the community. I am mindful that sometimes I step in a minefield that I didn't want to step into. So, I try to reach out as much as I can, but if there's, like in that look back, if there's something you think I shouldn't be doing, just please let me know. I mean, I will always call you back and email, and I mean, Tracy knows that, sends me text messages, you know, about things, and I'm, so every decision I've ever made here, I did it because I thought it was in the best interest of what the citizens and the board wanted to do. And I think one of the things that I pride myself in is statewide, the relationships that I've built over the years in government, that I can call, knock on the door, and I think if you look in the body of what we've been able to bring home from Boston, that's a great testament to bridge-building all these years. And I just want you to know that whatever decision that I did, it was because I thought personally, it was my value system guided me to say, unless you said, "Hey, don't do this." I thought going out and drumming up business or whatever, things, that's kind of like what I like to do and, because I think there's great potential in this community, and that's what I heard three years ago when I applied for the job, there's all this great pent-up potential here, and just to be part of unlocking that, it's gonna be an exciting thing. So, thank you.
You know, just so you know, we had, Bill was a very different personality and... personality. And, you know, as far as from me, he is a very skilled manager. And I still said things about his communication.
No, understood.
And one of the things that we worked towards was, he used to give us his, his weekly schedule. And it wasn't to, again, micromanage what he was doing, but it was like, you know, I wouldn't think to say, hey, you know, that property over by the senior center, we really worked hard not to develop that.
Trust me, I didn't know that was coming either until I was asked to show up there.
So, I mean, but it's things like that. Like maybe if we saw it, if I saw it like on your agenda that you were working towards it, then I would pick up the phone and just say, hey, you know, what's going on with that? And just because I think, you know, like you said, some of us have been here longer. So maybe we can find a way without actually having to speak to each other to just kind of let us know. A weekly, maybe wrap-up memo. I feel like we run out of time here.
Doesn't have to be long. Yeah. It doesn't have to be long. I think that that's, yeah. You don't want something to turn into a tedious kind of effort. I mean, that's, there's no point in that. We won't read it. And then you won't like deal with it.
Trust me, I was surprised about Forest Road as much as you were. So.
That's just one example.
All right.
Send me a text later, will you?
Maybe.
All right, we'll move on. We have many appointments, Mark?
Yeah, let's start off with the zoning board of appeals. We have some appointments to make there. I'm recommending that we re, yeah, it's, it's almost. I'm recommending that we reappoint Steve DeYoung to a regular term on the board of appeals. The appointment is for a five-year term running through January 2024.
Steve?
I'll move that appointment.
That's really a five-year term?
Can you believe that?
It is.
Wow.
Can you believe that?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries. Thank you. The next item is to take care of the alternates on the board. So I'm recommending we reappoint Dick Neets, Jerry Garnick, Doug Campbell, Susan Britta, and the ever-present Tom Barron as alternate members. Alternates are appointed for one year. So they're recommending they serve a one-year term that runs through January 2020.
I move those appointments.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is on the Conservation Commission. We had a vacancy and the Conservation Commission interviewed a candidate, and they are recommending that we appoint Patricia Mulhearn to the Town of Yarmouth Conservation Commission. She is going to fill an unexpired term running through June 2020.
I swear you do this just to make me crazy. Does she live in Yarmouth?
Yes.
Oh.
I'll move that appointment.
I didn't know that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
One has a question.
Before we move forward to this, I had.
So you, we're going to hold on this just yet?
Well, I'd just like to ask a question.
Okay, go right ahead.
Before we take a vote.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. I've been very concerned about the Conservation Commission this year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There's been a number of situations where the, I guess, to put it delicately, the balance between community safety concerns and desire to preserve conservation property is not something they are willing to take into account. And I'll be very specific. There was a, a walkway proposed, wasn't going to be anything hardened, a soft walkway at the, on either one side or another of Center Street, the last probably third of a mile to half of a mile. Residents have consistently complained about that area as a, as a real safety issue. Cars come around, whether they're, whether they're speeding or not, the lines of sight are very poor. And there was a proposal put before the Conservation Group to put in a pathway, nothing overly elaborate, nothing that would intrude into the conservation areas. But they unanimously opposed it and just really closed down the process. And I'm concerned about the composition of the committee and the balance of, of thinking on that committee. And we need people that are conservation-minded. That's not the issue. But we need people that will balance that with, with needs of the community that are, especially things like safety issues. That, to me, was just, I, I don't know what they were, what they were trying to do. And so I guess I, you know, and I don't want to, I don't know anything about Patricia Mulhearn. But I guess I would ask, Mark, if you're interviewing, that you be concerned, careful of the focus, that it not be so zealous in terms of a person's outlook as to rule out issues that may have real community concerns at heart.
I hear what you're saying.
She obviously didn't have any part of that decision because she wasn't there.
Yeah.
I said she obviously didn't have any part of that decision.
No, she wasn't. She wasn't. I just pointed out that it's something, you know, someone is certainly, you know, I look at some of the other things in her background. Bachelor of Science in Nursing, she's obviously a caring person.
Well, what I'd like, if I can just respond to that, I think, I'm, I think we should, if there's a policy or something in terms of the decision-making of the Conservation Commission, maybe we should just have a conversation as a board about a particular issue or a particular project, and then find ways to engage in some communication overall there. I think what I'd like to bring to these appointments are candidates that I, that show depth, show some experience, show some real competence, you know?
Some commitment.
I'm sorry?
With some commitment.
And some commitment to the town. I mean, the challenge that we do face as a community is getting a, you know, getting people involved and serving in the community. And I have no problem if we as a board want to take up an issue and have a conversation and see if we can better understand and come to some common ground or understanding with the board. I'm very open to that. But it's helpful for me to understand some of these issues ahead of time. So that if we do, as we go through this process, if I don't know, I'm not aware. And I believe it's important to have a board discussion and have it out in the open so that there's a broad understanding of what we're wrestling with.
And I think a couple of weeks ago, and our, obviously, our agenda has been loaded, you know?
Right.
And I had said something to Dan about, I think we need to have a board discussion. So, so, you know, I know he was intending at some point in the future to put it on the agenda. So to your point, that was something that I had hoped that we'd be able to cover. But given that we had this appointment in front of us, I thought it appropriate at least.
No, I'm, I'm open to revisiting that at the appropriate time. But in the meantime, I do support this appointment. I do recommend her. And, you know, I would be interested in the board acting on this.
Okay.
I have moved the appointment.
Eric?
I think we did.
Okay. So we just need a vote now?
We did a vote.
Okay. So we're all set?
We're all set.
Thank you. Okay, the next committee, this is, this has been a bit of a challenging committee to get filled. We set this up, God, well over a, almost a year ago, the Disabilities Commission. And this is a committee that has seven members. And these are the first three that we've gotten through the process. And, you know, I'd like to revisit the charter on this. I'm not sure we're going to have much success getting to seven. It may very well be that we have to make a modification to five. I understand there are two more candidates that are in the wings. And I'm hoping that I can set up interviews with them. So at the moment, we have these three. I've interviewed them. They're wonderful people. And I think they'll do a great job on this, on this particular committee. And so, and since we're doing them staggered, so I'm going to take them up one at a time. Ms. Beal, Evelyn Beal, for a one-year term through January 2020. David Botting for a two-year term through January 2021. And Janice Matheson, a three-year term through January 2022.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Thank you very much. And that concludes my report.
Okay. We have the minutes of May 22, 2018. I'm looking for other dates here.
That's it?
That's it. Have a motion?
I move the acceptance of the minutes of May 22, 2018.
Second.
Second. Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We'll move to the future agenda.
On the future agenda, Mr. Chairman, we have not yet populated it with articles for your discussion. But the next version of this, we're going to discuss that in the office tomorrow as to how to lay out those different articles. So it'll get, the next version of this will be heavily populated with discussion on that topic.
Okay. All right, I guess, yeah, I'm going to be away for things like the 13th through the 14th or something like that. I may miss the 12th. I'm not 100% sure. But I turned off my phone, so my calendar is down.
I think you sent me an email about your schedule. You did, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Any items on the agenda?
Too many.
Too many items. Yeah, I know. I know. Obviously, we had a conversation about the timeframe.
We had a really good conversation. But, but I might ask, you know, and it's all for your discussion. I know the 19th is the day after the holiday, I think anyways. But, but certainly as we're in this like tough season, I mean, if you wanted to add an extra day, like, I don't know, you know, what your appetite is to do that. But that is one thing we could do to parcel it up, make it a shorter meeting, though we meet more frequently. But I am, Norm and I went back at quite a length this week talking about ideas, how you could shorten things up. And we've got such a volume of material in front of us.
You did a great job tonight.
I know. Thankfully, it came after the.
You're right.
I mean, there's no easy way, except for to
I know.
Add a date or two here or there on the calendar.
Good job.
You know? So it's up to you if you want to go.
It's more sushi. I would personally rather meet more often than to have six, seven-hour meetings.
So like, for instance, on February 5th, would you want to schedule that for a meeting? I mean, as it's laying out anyways, you might actually want one anyways.
Probably ought to do that.
All right. Because I can't be here.
What would we move on to the 5th?
I will, and I, you can have a meeting, I won't be here.
Oh, and the 5th, okay.
So what about the 19th?
But don't, but don't worry about that. Don't worry about that.
Well, no, we could do the 19th. I guess it's just been a tradition, I understand, like on a, after Monday holiday, not to have one.
You usually have one on a holiday.
But we could always break a tradition.
But we have, we have before.
No, understood. It's up to you. But it's school vacation. Can we start at noon?
School vacation.
Huh? It's 19th school break?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that leaves us with like
Nothing.
Nothing really for February. But March, we could add March 12th. Is that all right? That we could plan for that?
March 12th.
That'd get us out of a lot of situations if we added one more to March, I think. It'd be a long March, but March is long anyways.
Like a line, not like a line.
March 12th.
You have to have two in a month.
Two in a month, yes, correct.
The charter.
That's required.
Yeah.
So what's the other February one?
The 26th and the 12th.
And the 12th, okay.
Yeah. Well, we have time. So let's, let me populate the rest of the, look ahead with the articles and see how that lays out. And then you can make your decision on 12.
Well, yeah, well, okay. Yeah, looking forward to March 5th. I mean, that doesn't look like a big presentation, but I.
Not right now, right?
Okay.
Is it possible, do we, do we need another presentation? I mean, I'm just going to ask that question.
From who?
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be helpful just to get the information that we asked for?
Well, here's, yeah, here's the situation, right? So I believe the Board of Health, I'm waiting to get information from Mr. Murphy. They had some follow-up questions on the meeting last night.
Yeah.
Conscom has been asked for some more information. It was sent to them, February 7th, the next meeting on this topic. I was going to wait to get everything from all of them, what their decisions are on things, and then put it to you in writing as to what those outcomes were. And then if you want, we could send whatever that outcome is, if we could talk about it at an upcoming meeting and decide how we want to go forward. I mean, I think you already know, we're not wholesale spraying this stuff. It's very strategically used. And the biggest area of concern for everybody is the Fragmites. It's a great tool for that. And if we take that away, we're in tough shape.
All right. Anything else on the agenda? Okay, individual items?
God, no.
Hearing none?
Oh, I got one.
Oh.
Today's my, my grandfather's 92nd birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
So I'm just wishing him happy birthday. He watches these meetings. And like now, he's like, are you still on the board? I never see you.
All right, consent agenda?
There you go. See, I'm here.
Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Dan, anything else?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to bring to your attention, thank you, Mr. Chairman, after many, many months, we are pleased to have the speed study done on 6A in Center Street. The findings supported pretty much what the neighborhood wanted for round one improvements. So to bring the board up to, up to date on that, based on the results, and we'll post the study on the website so the neighborhood can have access to it. But just based on the findings, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Do you want it individually or on the website? You want it?
Well, I mean, if you could email it or if you're folks, that'd be great. So we have the information that they have.
So it's recommending a reducing the speed limit from 35 to 30 between 6A and Fourwind Road, and eliminating the 25 mile an hour speed limit between Fourwind Road and Grays Beach and replacing it with a 20 mile an hour safety zone. So that's about as conservative as we can be on the speed-related issue. I also, I was talking about speed, we did get a email from a resident concerned about, I believe it was Willow Street speeding.
Yeah.
I, I asked the chief to do what he can to get on that, and they're going to take care of that situation. So that did get addressed. But this is good news. The neighborhood meeting, we're working with a consultant to schedule that. Should be sometime early April, I believe, as to the next steps.
On 6A?
On 6A, that's correct.
I think that was on Union Street, wasn't it?
Maybe it was Union Street. It might have been. Yeah, yeah. I forget now. Other than that, I think you got all the updates that I had on stuff, so.
All right. Motion adjourned.
So move.
Second.
Almost just a 11:00.
Right.